One.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's Pleasanton special city council meeting here in beautiful downtown Pleasanton. It is February eighth at six P M. And we're going to jump right into our special meeting with a single agenda plus a chance for folks to speak. So could we have a roll call, please?
Council members, Arkin.
Here.
Bulch.
President.
Nara.
President.
Testa.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here. All right, everyone is here, ready to do some work today. Our next agenda item on this single topic is meeting open to the public. So we did wrap up a meeting open to the public at our previous meeting. I got notice that some people could not attend that meeting and are interested in speaking. So in the interest of letting everybody have their say and listen, listening to their concerns by their city council, I'm going to ask that we open the public hearing. Jocelyn, can you please give some directions for those of you at home that may be by Zoom or by phone? How you can log on and let us know you want to speak today?
Yes, members of the public may participate in the Zoom meeting by using the raise your hand function when public comment is opened on the agenda item. You will be remute, you will be unmuted when your name is called and you will be remuted after the allotted time. To raise your hand, click the raise your hand button or star nine on your telephone. To unmute your phone, press star six.
Okay, we're going to start with a public comment. These are regarding items not listed on the agenda. And of course, our agenda items is a housing element update. So do we have anybody that would like to speak on agenda item one, which are items not on tonight's agenda?
It appears we have one speaker with her hand raised, Wally Meyer.
Okay, Wally, if you want to speak on items not listed on the agenda, it's your turn. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. My name's Wally Meyer, been part of the community since nineteen sixty-eight. And I wanted to talk about the Valley Plaza project.
Oh, we're going to go through that.
Okay, so do I talk now or do I talk later?
Well, if you stay on the line, we're going to call for items about this agenda and that's your time to speak. So hang tight. And we'll call on you first. How about that? Okay, all right. So if that's our only speaker for items not on the agenda, I'm going to close that portion of the public hearing. I know it seems tedious, but we're going to open up public comment for items on tonight's agenda. We're going to ask the clerk to limit the speaker's time to two minutes, just as we did the evening, the last city council meeting. So two minutes, we are all yours. We want to hear from you. And we will start with Mr. Wally Meyer, our first speaker, please.
Unmute myself. Thank you again, Mayor, and thank you, city council members. I wanted to talk about the Valley Plaza project in particular and mixed use zoning as a whole. When I was young, which was a long time ago, mixed use zoning was very common. Now we're all concerned about the carbon footprint. And to me, it makes really great sense to go back to those mixed use zoning to be able to provide services in exactly where the area is where people live. I think the project in Dublin has been a great success with the housing above, you know, the commercial area. And I know this project isn't exactly like that, but it does provide services for those people that live directly on that property. And I think it would be a great benefit to the city of Pleasanton and to those residents and also keep the carbon footprint down for the rest of us. So thank you very much. That's really all I have to say. That thank you again.
Thank you, Wally. All right, our next speaker.
The next speaker is Kendra Mayott, followed by Robin Boggs.
Hi, I'm Kendra Mayott, and I am commenting on the proposed plot behind Donlin, Donlin Elementary. A couple of concerns, living in that neighborhood. The school currently accesses dormant or accesses pain through the back. There are two different walkways to cut through and we've been encouraged to drop off and pick up our students from the backside of the school since it's safer and has less traffic back there. So I want to make sure that the school continues to have access to the back to pain if anything does happen with that lot. Another concern is the traffic on West Los Bacetus Boulevard, where it goes down to just one lane in each direction. We get a lot of traffic there at school let out times. We have it from the elementary, the middle and the high school. So with even more housing, I would really hope something would be done to help the traffic issues on West Los Bacetus Boulevard. And the third thing is if housing does go in, that it remains single story. This whole neighborhood is single story homes unless people have made additions. And that's one of the reasons we moved to this neighborhood was because of the single story homes. So I would really hope that that would be continued with anything that does go in on that lot there. And those are the majority of my concerns, as well as just green space for Donlin, which currently the backfield is the only green space that the students have access to for recess. And I would hope that if that lot does get sold, that somehow there be made green space for the students at Donlin Elementary. Thank you.
Great points. Thank you, Kendra. Okay.
The next speaker is Robin Boggs, followed by Ahmed Shikol Islam. I am not seeing Robin in the room, so the next speaker is Ahmed Shikol Islam.
Thank you. Great. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Ahmed Shikol Islam, and I'm assistant superintendent of Business Services for the Pleasanton Unified School District. And I'm going to provide some clarifying comments. And along with Mr. Chostak will be around to answer any questions. The district has placed three of our properties to be considered on the housing element plan. And the reason for that is we'd like to have greater flexibility and opportunities as we look to address the housing increases. And we want to have more space for our students and better address our needs of our staff. Currently, as you're aware of, we have overcrowded schools and many of our students or staff are in aging facilities. And so by having these on the housing element plan, the district will be able to work with the city to meet its goals and also increase the value of the properties. So it provides our school board and the community opportunities to look at a diverse set of solutions as we tackle these complex issues. So at this time, we're really asking to see to keep these on the current list for further analysis and consideration. At the appropriate time, if these remain on the list and is the desire of our school board to look at any type of selling of the property, there is a regulatory and public process by which these properties would have to go through if that is the final intent of the school district. A couple of clarifying comments on Donlin. We intend to keep the school. We intend to keep an appropriate sized field and are only considering selling a portion of the field. The new property cannot support a new school as it doesn't have enough students in that area. So we like to consider selling that property as an option to be able to purchase a property where students are going to be coming from, from a lot of the new housing. And finally, and most importantly, is the district office. This is a facility that is over fifty years old, has a myriad of ADA issues that poorly serve our students at Village High School, especially our special needs. It poorly serves our district operation and houses our buses, maintenance and operations yard in the heart of downtown. The district is in a planning process at looking at moving the functions of the district, including village, to an appropriate, safe and modern facilities. And by having these on the housing element list will help us realize those goals. Thank you.
So before you leave, may I ask you a question? So you are planning to relocate Village High School as well. Wouldn't that require a significant site for land?
Yes, and so it will require land, and that is why it's very important for that site to be, you know, for us to be able to, again monetize it to be able to locate the facilities in the appropriate locations.
And you have a preschool there on the corner. You'd relocate that as well?
Correct. And so we have our preschool program. It's interesting that you bring that up because as you're aware, we are expanding transitional kindergarten to all four-year-olds. So we're going to have to reimagine our both our horizon and steam and together hopefully utilize new facilities and bring new early education to our students.
All right, thank you very much. I see my city attorney with his hand raised. Mr. Sodergrin?
Yes, Mayor, I was just going to recommend, as we discussed last meeting, that we take site twenty-five and twenty-six first and do separately questions, comments and discussion for twenty-five and questions, comments and discussion for twenty-six. So perhaps, I don't know if the school district representatives can can stay for those discussions, but that would probably be the most appropriate time for questions.
Okay, because, yes, we have quite a few school district sites. So Maude and your team, if you could stay for questions, that would be appreciated.
We'll be happy to.
Thanks on a site by site basis. All right. Anybody else like to speak on something not site twenty-five or twenty-six?
Mayor, I'm not entirely sure which sites are.
You can feel free to, you can feel free to open up the whole public comment. It's just, just I would prefer that you reserve questions and comments.
Additional questions? Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so our next speaker is Vishal, followed by Joseph Hernan. It doesn't appear that Vishal is here, so the next speaker is Joseph Hernan, followed by Linda Randys.
Joseph, welcome to our meeting. You are on mute.
Hey, how's that? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Welcome to our meeting.
Great, my apologies. Thank you very much. Yeah, I live actually just down the street from the, from the school district that's proposed to be torn down with the property sold off to a developer. And I only just recently became aware that the proposal is for two hundred fifty units of housing to be put on on that property, which raises a number of concerns. Specific to the proposal, way too small piece of property to put that many housing units on. Downtown already has traffic congestion, parking problems. You're going to be exacerbating those problems with with just overly dense development going there. Also, the fact that the taxpayers of Pleasanton ponied up for those buildings and I concede that apparently they're a little bit of disrepair. But it just further bothers my mind that we're considering selling this property off to a developer instead of doing improvements or rebuilding on the same site, the facilities that would be appropriate and proper proper and appropriate for our needs. And so strongly opposed to doing that. And the other comment I'd make is, I don't know how widely it is known by the people of Pleasanton, the large number of these types of projects that are being planned to get plopped down in communities all over town. I was shocked to find there's going to be a five-story apartment that is in the process of, I guess, it's going to be going in across the library. And I understand it's actually a done deal. And I only just recently heard of it. And I have a feeling I'm not the only one in Pleasanton who doesn't know about these things. I think maybe the city should do outreach instead of notifications, so people can thoroughly understand what's going on and have the ability to weigh in.
All right, well, keep, stay tuned, please. We're going to tell you a lot more about why we're doing these environmental studies at this point. So we have lots to share. So thank you. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Linda Randys, followed by Tom Sanson.
On mute. I thank you, Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Linda Randis and I'm a Pleasanton resident. I've lived on Black Avenue for the past twenty-four years, so I am speaking tonight. My questions on site nineteen, the Black Avenue proposed site. Just some things that I've noticed in the last years, the notable increase in traffic already on Black Avenue, taking out, you know, the COVID time, but before that, it's back to what it was like. Also, under the key considerations and feasibility for this site, it is not mentioned that there are the two elementary schools that anchor Black Avenue, that being Alice Alp at the corner and Walnut Grove. So the traffic, there's, there's a lot of traffic, as you, as I know you're probably all aware at both school times. Also, the middle school being right off of Greenwood and a lot of traffic also from the high school. And the high school traffic at Black and San Rita being very bad and the post office not being mentioned also either, which is here. So that we're talking about a considerable amount of things that that I feel should be looked at in the feasibility that aren't mentioned right here, being the schools, the post office, and also the aquatic center. When there are swim meets, you know, it's very crowded. There's no parking. And that happens a lot. It used to happen a lot, and I'm sure we're going to get back to that when the time has come. So I just ask you to look at this and consider some of the other options or consider, you know, what can be done about the feasibility of those items. So thank you. Thank you so much, and I'm glad to be here tonight.
Thank you, Linda. Our next speaker.
Tom Sanson, followed by Lisa Denton.
Good evening, Tom. Welcome to our city council meeting. Tom, are you there? Welcome to our council meeting. Maybe he's not aware that he is on the city council. Can we go to the next person?
Yes, the next speaker is Lisa Denton, followed by Robert Fennella.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and staff. My name is Lisa Denton, and I am a Valvista resident. I'm here to speak about the housing project that's proposed for the Donlin Field, which I strongly oppose. Donlin Elementary is the, one of the only elementary schools that is not a city that does not have any green space within their fence line. The students at Donlin do not get to regularly access field, and this becomes an equity issue. It is a California state physical education standard that students run or walk the mile, elementary students. That walk portion is because of schools that are in cities that don't have access to green space. Donlin is one of those. Donlin students currently run the mile for P E on the blacktop or in the multi-use room when they have a field right there for them to use. Now, I strongly oppose the the housing that would be put on this field. And of course, if we can, the previous district person had mentioned that they would leave some field space for Donlin. I'm curious as to how much they would leave, if it would be enough and for the school and for the students. If housing is put on this lot, I agree with Kendra Mayott that a large portion of the field is left and put inside Donlin's fence line. Single-story homes are what are built there, and we have continual access from Payne Road. And of course, I know this isn't up to you guys, but along with the field, the students should have a track that they can run around for the mile. Of course, that is another battle that I will take on with the school district in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in. Thanks. Our next speaker.
Mayor, so I just realized that Robert had previously spoken at the last meeting's public comment period, so the intention, I believe, was not to repeat speakers. Is that correct?
That, that is, that is, if at all possible, if you're speaking on the same site, please refrain. I have had numerous people request and I've been consistent to just speak on once and on that site that you're speaking about today or previously. So yes. I'm debating of Tom. Tom was trying to speak and was never able to do that. Can we try Tom again? Sanson? There we are. Hi, Tom, let's try it again. You're on mute and your hand is raised, so. Can you take yourself off mute, please? Oh, Tom, okay. He would do that by star not, could you repeat the directions briefly, Jocelyn?
Yes, so Tom, if you are connecting by telephone, you would unmute your phone by pressing star six.
Okay, Tom, are you still there? Could you please unmute and join our meeting? Okay. All right, or did we have any other speakers?
We do. The next speaker is Jim Summers, followed by Christine Borg.
Good morning, good evening, Mayor Brown, members of the council. My name is Jim Summers, president of the SLA Group, representing the ownership of the Merritt property, site twenty-two. I'm very appreciative that both the Housing Commission and the Planning Commission have recommended to keep our site in the inventory list for recommendation to the council. And I'd like to ask that the council maintain the site on the list and let it be a part of the housing element process so that it can be analyzed properly as we go through the housing element process. I'd also like to let you know that I'll be available if any questions come up during the discussion on the Merritt property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
The next speaker is Christine Borg.
My name is Christine Borg. Nope.
Yep, yep, you're there. You're with us. Okay. Hi, Christine. Don't jump, drop off. You've got everything.
Forty-five twelve Second Street for over forty-eight years with my husband, Brian. I taught in Pleasanton Schools and I retired in two thousand nine. I'm really familiar with the Pleasant Unified School District campus on the corner of First and Bernal. And it is a very convenient, it's in a very convenient location to access, but I have a lot of concerns about this property being rezoned for housing. Almost all support for P U S D is contained on this site, the district office, the warehouse, maintenance departments, Village High School, childcare and more. If sold, these services would all need to be relocated to other areas in town. The business park has been one place suggested, but currently the facility is pretty centrally located. And if it moved, it may not be. And I think demolishing the current buildings would be harmful to the environment and unnecessary. Moving elsewhere would be costly. So I, those are other reasons. And other reasons are that two hundred to two hundred and fifty housing units that could be built on the site would add more traffic to an already huge mess on First Street. At commute time, locals and cut-through drivers that get backed up in lines of twenty-five or more, and they pollute the air and make it unsafe for children to play in their front yards without parent supervision. Speeders drive up to forty and fifty miles and an hour at other times when it isn't congested. And cars turn on second, third, cause an unsafe situation, so they speed to avoid the backup. If this property is rezoned for housing, under proposition thirty-five, developers come along and claim the land to build massive structures like the five-story building proposed for Harrison and Old Bernal. Finally, housing necessary would be incompatible right next to one of the nicest historic neighborhoods in Pleasanton. Please vote to remove it from the list of possible housing sites. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, that was our last speaker, was not a duplicate speaker from the previous meeting.
Okay, all right. I'll give you one more chance and then I'm going to close the public hearing. So if you want to speak on items and you have not spoken, please raise your hand so the city clerk can recognize you. You will need to take yourself off mute if you're selected so that we can hear from you and take your concerns into consideration when we deliberate about which properties should go for environmental review. Right, still no one?
So Mayor, I do have a request to speak from Vina, and then I would like to mention that the repeat speakers who have their hand raised. I can tell you their names and whether you would like to hear them or not this evening.
I think, I think it would be unfair to go back through and have everybody repeat, but if you are talking about a different parcel of land than you did previously, so you have a different comment than previously, keep your hand raised and we would like to hear from you. We're just trying to avoid anybody making an impression again. And trust me, we have all been making good notes and we understand of the comments that are being made. So with that, let's hit the folks that say they're unique responses or they would like to share a different parcel of land concerned.
Okay, the next speaker is Vina, followed by Aditi Neer.
Hello.
Hello, Vina. Welcome to our council meeting.
Hi, thank you for having me and good evening to all of you. I just have a generic question regarding, and I see that the P U S D representative is also here, so I have a question with respect to the school district. Four of our schools are actually impacted, Donlin, Fairlands, Hart and Amador. And I'm just wondering with these housing elements, what happens to the schools, like how are we going to fit these students to our, to our current schools? Because on one, on its directional, on one hand, we have elementary and middle, which is impacted. On the other hand, we have high school, which is impacted. Yeah, it, yeah, something that I'm looking for an insight.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if that will be answered in today's meeting, but I definitely would support you contacting the school district and calling into one of their meetings and asking how they're going to address that. Because that is their responsibility and it's a real good question, some excellent question. All right, next speaker.
The next speaker is Aditi Neer, followed by Joe Chalinski.
A good evening, and yes, I did speak at the last meeting. However, I actually wanted to speak to Mr. Ahmed Sheikh Lusani's comment. Will that be okay?
Sure, go right ahead, but please be brief, because it may end up, the best thing for you to do is to call into a school board meeting.
I absolutely agree, but I just wanted to point out one thing. He's absolutely right that Donlin is an impacted school. And it is going, and it is overcrowded. But the second thing that he said was the new housing that would be built would be would be good for falling enrollments. I would like to point out that twenty-eight houses are supposed to be built on the site. And I can assure you that more than twenty-eight new families have moved in the Valvista area alone, all with young families in the past year and a half. Also, we can have, and probably we will have this debate with P U S D about falling enrollment numbers because I don't know how they're getting that numbers, but that's all I wanted to say. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Good night. Thank you. Yep, thank you. And call into the school board meetings. They've got more answers about those things. Yeah, thanks. And our next speaker.
Joe Chalinski, followed by Brian Casey.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. So I did speak last time and I wanted to comment more generally this time, so different, different topics slightly. And it's specifically around the density and the medium density sites. The current general plan for Pleasanton provides for a medium density residential range defined as two to eight units per acre. The current proposal The current proposal increases this by more than three X to fifteen to twenty-five units per acre. At the same time, the proposal also increases the current definition of low density from zero to two units per acre to two to seven units per acre. And it also creates a low to medium density class at eight to fourteen units per acre. I'd like to ask the commission to review the sites pegged as medium to determine if they are more appropriately classified as low or low medium. Uh, in particular, the Tri Valley Inn, uh, but directly abuts, uh, residential, single-family, um, houses in the Birdland community. Um, and probably doesn't make sense to be, uh, classified as medium, um, allocating fifty units into that two and a half acres directly abutting those neighborhoods. Um, thank you.
Right, good research. Okay, we'll try our best to answer that question as we go through the reports today. Uh, our next speaker.
Brian Casey.
All right, good evening, Mr. Casey.
Honorable mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Welcome to our council meeting.
All right, I'm, uh, I spoke the last time, so I'll make this quick. But I wanted to thank you, 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 you know, you folks for your, for your time and service. Thank you for continuing this topic from, uh, last week's meeting. I was worried that the major topic was going to be rushed through the system without clear attention and decisions about Pleasanton's long-term footprint. You folks will leave your footprint or growth strategy for Pleasanton by these decisions for many years going forward. Again, you, thank you for continuing this and wish you good luck on making good decisions on sites throughout Pleasanton. You're not going to please everyone, but can you certainly make decisions on what is best for the area, the site that fits the existing community? Some current development throughout town is a concern because some buildings do not fit the existing community, three-story and a one-story or parking challenges and so on. My other concern is I was reading some of the staff notes. When you look at the number of applicants for this program today and, and across time, you know, you're working in a range of, you know, less than a hundred, but there's eighty thousand people in town and you're looking at fulfilling like six thousand units. You're going to put six thousand more people in, in, in town, you know, um, so the, you know, the question is, you know, if Pleasanton builds all the units required by the state, are we going to be able to fill those units? You know, based on the applicants that are out there right now, no, you're not. Um, and my other concern is what's the overall strategy for Pleasanton on what you're going to do with this housing, right? Um, you know, we're, we're chasing a number to qualify for the state. But really, what are you folks thinking in terms of how do we make this fit? And how do we continue to make this town, you know, a great community? I raised my family here and there's people moving here that want to keep, um, that same thing going. So I hope you consider everything and make good decisions. Thanks for your time.
Great, thank you. All right, any other speakers?
Mayor, that was our last speaker.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, everyone who wrote emails. We got lots of emails and many of them very well researched and detailed. Uh, and thank you for those of you that called in this evening, as well as, as those of you that are watching tonight. And we'll have a great conversation with your neighbors tomorrow after you learn all that we're going to go through. You know, the purpose of this evening's meeting, and I will turn this over to staff, but it is to select sites for environmental studies. We're not going to rezone properties tonight. We're not going to approve projects for construction tonight. We're just saying which projects, which sites should be evaluated for an environmental review called an environmental impact report. That's it. And so you're going to see, we're going to round up most likely in our numbers in order to have a little extra because some may fall off. Some of the concerns we've heard about too much traffic or air quality will come up most likely through the environmental studies. And if the property is not removed from the list today, it may be removed in the future or downsized. So just to kind of set the expectation of what the purpose is today, it is to pick out of these twenty-nine sites, what shall we send up for environmental review? So let me, with that, I will introduce the item. It is continued from an adjourned regular meeting from February first. It's a housing element review and update and approval for potential sites to be considered for rezoning for residential development and inclusion into the environmental analysis as parts of the site's inventory. This is an eight-year plan. We do not do this every year. And this is called the sixth cycle of our regional housing needs allocation. So with that, um, Dan, would you like to, uh, explain again about the removal of a council member for the first site, which, um, is going to be site number twenty-five?
Mayor, I'm wondering if, um, we could have a few introductory comments before we even get to those first two.
Sure, we did it before, but let's do it again. So, yes, introductory comments.
Very, very quickly.
Yes, Director Clark, would you like to take that step?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Brown. I do have just a, just a few slides to, uh, just to recap, um, the presentation from last time uh, for the benefit of the, uh, the public here today and also, um, emphasize a couple of additional points of clarification for the council before we, uh, begin discussion of the individual site. So, um, if you just give me a moment, I will share my screen. I just have a few slides to go through. Are you able to see that? Great.
Yeah, yes.
Perfect. Um, so as Mayor Brown mentioned, uh, tonight, we are requesting that the city council review, uh, a list of sites as well as, uh, the density assumptions for each of those sites and the recommendations, uh, for the sites that would be part of a preliminary draft housing sites inventory. And those would, as Mayor Brown mentioned, be forwarded for inclusion in our, uh, Sequo environmental impact report and consideration at a later date for, uh, potential inclusion in the housing element and for rezoning. So just to, uh, remind everybody, uh, we did an analysis of, of what we have today. The state requires us by law to make sure and show that we have enough capacity to meet our regional housing needs allocation. That research indicated that we need to find new sites to accommodate, uh, just over three thousand new housing units. Although that's the gap that we're trying to meet with the sites that are being discussed tonight, the, the recommendation is that we do include sort of a margin, a buffer of additional capacity, um, which will allow for, uh, the environmental review process, the required review by the state, and importantly, the additional, uh, input from uh, the community and others, uh, to allow for that site to be further refined and narrowed down through the, uh, through the next steps of the process. And it also provides a, a conservative basis for our sequel analysis where we're analyzing, um, a little bit more capacity so that we have a conservative basis and really understand all of those impacts. In just a moment, I'll talk a little bit more about the density assumptions because I know that's been a question that's come up. How did you come up with those numbers? And those ranges in, that are, uh, being discussed tonight for the various sites. But just to reiterate, the final site inventory will be, we expect a narrowed list of sites from one of those that you're talking about tonight, uh, with a, uh, likely a smaller or more, more minimal buffer, more closely aligning for the actual, uh, need and capacity that's identified in our regional housing needs allocation.
Um, so just. And before you go on. Yeah, just before you go on, I just want to make sure that if you don't mind going back for those, uh, that are watching at home, the slide before, pre, please. Uh, just, we've all been told six thousand housing sites and you're showing three thousand. If you could hit that one more time and then define what Sequo is for those who aren't familiar with it, could you please?
Of course. So, um, as part of that eight-year housing element cycle, um, the city is, is assigned essentially a target number of housing units that we have to show. We have sufficient land and zoning capacity to accommodate. Um, we have, uh, many parcels and properties within the city that already have residential land use designations and that are not fully built out today. And that includes sites that were, uh, have, have, uh, just a modest amount of, of infill, say, a, a large, larger-sized parcel that might have a single-family home and might have capacity for more units to be added, as well as sites that were zoned and designated in our last housing element cycle or the cycle before that have not yet been built. And all of those projects can be sort of counted and used to build up a baseline of capacity. And then the three thousand housing units are additional sites, the sites that don't currently have residential zoning, um, that the city will need to, uh, to choose and identify particular locations where, uh, additional capacity can be, can be found and added to our residential zoning. Um, I'm sorry, your second question is about Sequo. So, Sequo stands for the California Environmental Quality Act. That's a requirement that says that before our city council takes any action on a project, uh, including something like adoption of the housing element, we have to fully analyze all of the potential environmental impacts of that, of that land use decision. And so that will be part of the information that will, will be brought to the council and part of the consideration as decisions are made about those rezonings in the future.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, just to touch briefly on density assumptions as a, as a question that has come up during, uh, both in the last meeting and in some of the public comments tonight. As part of our capacity assessment, we have to both identify sites but also assign a, uh, a realistic capacity and density to each of those sites. The state is very clear that our inventory needs to account for a realistic capacity, one that considers things like market realities, that considers physical constraints, um, and some of the inherent limitations that come with, uh, developing a piece of property. And so for that reason, um, the advice that we have received, um, based from our consultants who have done work, uh, with other jurisdictions as part of their housing elements, um, is that we take a somewhat more, uh, conservative approach in the way that we count density and capacity on each of our sites and use, uh, what is often called a safe harbor set of assumptions. So, in particular, for the high-density sites, which are those that we can consider to help meet our, uh, lower-income housing need. Um, although a range of density is assigned for each of those sites, the assumption in every case is that those sites will develop at the lowest end of the range, not, not the high, not even at the middle, but at the low end. And that's a safe harbor assumption, uh, that, that HCD, uh, will, we can be fairly confident HCB, HCD will, will accept. For the low and medium-density sites, it's a little bit of a less, um, uh, difficult bar to get through with the state to sort of prove the developability of those sites. And so in those cases, we've picked, I mean, the, the mid, middle end of the range. So if we have a fifteen to twenty-five units per acre density range, we're assuming that those sites will develop at about the midpoint, about twenty units to the acre. So, um, that, that's just to sort of, uh, be, be clear about how the, how those density assumptions have been calculated and those numbers that you see, even though the density ranges in some cases would allow for more density, um, potentially on, on some of those sites if, if all of those sort of development obstacles could be overcome. And then the other dimension, um, as I mentioned, is with respect to the correlation between density and affordability that the state, um, confers. In order to count any of our units in our lower-income inventory, the minimum density that we have to assume for those sites is thirty dwelling units to the acre. That's a minimum. Um, moderate income is a little bit lower, uh, at twenty to twenty-nine units to the acre. And then there's also some, uh, guidance on the sorts of site, of sites that are, are deemed to be most appropriate to yield those types of housing, uh, development. So for lower-income projects, higher-density projects, point five to ten acres, and for moderate income, at least a quarter of an acre. And it's important to note that we can go outside of those parameters, but it does place a, uh, a higher burden on the city to prove those out in terms of documentation and evidence the sites really are realistic to, to develop. And then for above-moderate units, we have much more flexibility. Those can be accommodated on a range of sites at a range of densities. And we can sign them as we feel is appropriate because those are the units that the market tends to want to produce. Um, so at the last, uh, hearing, uh, staff provided a presentation. I won't go through all of these points. But we did also reiterate the planning commission's recommendation, which was out of the twenty-nine sites that have been so far preliminarily identified. They recommended that twenty-three of them move forward, uh, into the environmental analysis. The public spoke at that meeting. We had about fourteen members in public speaking, including, uh, members of the public, as well as those representing individual properties. The item was continued. And then since then, we've received quite a few additional comments. I think it's, I believe it's about seventy-five additional comments. Uh, the, the vast majority in relationship to the Donlin school site, um, among those received. Um, so I, I, we were going through, through each of these in depth, but this is just to provide a quick overview of the locations of the twenty-nine sites that are being discussed tonight. And then the slides summarize, um, the, uh, just very briefly, uh, the, the sites, the, the, the density ranges, the assumed capacity and the planning commission's recommendation. In your packet, attachment four provides a lot of the same information I would ferry there as we, as we move through the sites, um, in detail. So, site one through ten, uh, eleven through twenty and twenty-one through twenty-nine are, are all listed here. And I'm happy to, to flashback to the slide at any point, uh, if it would be helpful. So tonight, the format of the hearing, uh, as, um, was discussed at the last meeting, we are recommending that the city council first discuss two individual sites, Site twenty-five, which is the PUSD district site, uh, and then Site twenty-six. Um, and, uh, there are individual council members, um, who, uh, who, who may, may choose to recuse for those two sites and then circle back and bring the council back together as a whole to talk about the remaining sites. Um, so that concludes staff's presentation. Um, and we will be ready to move on to Site twenty-five, uh, whenever the council is ready.
Okay, uh, council member Testa, you have a comment?
Well, um, are we able to ask questions? And I would like to ask questions before I go into exile.
Are you asking questions? Uh, because we're going to break it down to each individual parcel. So did you want?
I want, I want to ask questions based on the, the comments that were just shared with us, the staff presentation.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, super. Thanks. Okay, so, um, I have a, a question. By assuming, um, average density rather than maximum on top of density range, isn't, by using those density assumptions instead of going to the highest density, aren't we already creating kind of a buffer by doing that? And then we're adding another fifty percent buffer in addition to that. And just to, to be really fun, Ellen, um, I also would ask, um, if, well, one of my next questions will be, so this would be a good one to put here. Which of our twenty-nine sites are vulnerable to SB thirty-five and density bonus? Because then aren't we, again, looking at, in, uh, future, much higher densities? And so we are factoring in really kind of a, a triple-tiered density, uh, or a bonus. And I'm sorry, um, buffer.
Dan, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Just gonna say, um, my recommendation would be to take questions and comments only on twenty-five first, then decide, and then all questions and comments only on twenty-six second, and then questions and comments on the remaining, uh, potential housing sites.
You know, um, a city attorney, Sodagram, I, with all due respect, my comments are general to the whole process, not about sites. So I think that it is appropriate to ask them now in context with the entirety, not, I don't, I think that the questions I'm asking, aren't site-specific, right?
That, that's, that's my recommendation. That, of course, would be up to the council on how they would wish to proceed.
Mayor, if I may, real fast?
Yeah.
Uh, I was gonna ask staff if they could explain the no net loss, which might slightly lead into council member Testa's comment. And I was asking if that might be something we could present or ask the staff to talk about no net loss? Is that something, uh, Mr. Sodagren, we could do at this time?
It's up to the council on, on, you know, if you want to ask general questions now, again, my, my recommendation would be to take them separately. But again, it's, it's up to the council on how you wish to proceed with the general questions.
Any feedback from other council members? Vice Mayor, Arkin?
Um, I, I am, I mean, I'm fine either way, but I think it might be better to take general questions, not site-specific questions first. Um, that's just my opinion.
That was my opinion. Uh, council member Narin?
Um, I'm okay taking site-specific, or, I'm sorry, general questions now. I think the problem is it's a slippery slope. So, um, I think we have to be very cautious. And if we're going to do that, I certainly would hope that our city attorney would immediately weigh in if he feels we're starting down the slope.
Okay. And council, Vice Mayor Arkin, did you have a follow-up question then?
I have a general question to ask, so I don't.
Right after. Okay, all right. Council member Tester, go ahead and complete your question, but be very cautious.
Okay, I I I, that was my first question. I have other questions, so I would ask Planning Director Clark to respond to the my question about the the buffer. I'll throw one more in because it's related and get it out of the way. So maybe we can start with the question that is a very general question that is when we're talking about a fifty percent buffer and then as I I indicated my concern about these layered buffers as well. What in fact is the buffer that is recommended by HCD when we are talking a fifty percent and layered?
Um, so answering some feedback, has our mic on. The the density range, the HCD requires us to create an inventory that includes an estimated capacity for all of the sites. And the capacity has to be based on that reasonable assumption, realistic capacity assumption. So those are the building blocks that we have. We have the sites and we have an assumed density and capacity. But you are correct, council member Testa, that the having a range does inherently create excess capacity above and beyond our capacity, above our our sort of stated capacity for those sites. However, I think that's an inevitable outcome of the way that the state is asking to look at the sites. And we'll be conducting their review is that we will end up with inherently a little bit of extra because we can only count you know, the the somewhat more conservative end of the range for each of the sites. The fifty percent, though, is an initial buffer, right? So we're trying to say to through our environmental review process, and at this relatively early stage, we have a year left to run in the process, that it's sensible to identify more sites than we know that we need. We know that we more than we know that we need, understanding that 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 list is going to get narrowed down. And the council will have the opportunity to make additional decisions about that final list, which may or may not include adjustments to the density ranges as well. And and tonight, obviously, as the council goes through each of site, you will have the opportunity to talk about the density ranges and make a decision as to whether or not the top end or the bottom end of that that range should be adjusted.
And so I'll fill in the blank. HCD recommends ten percent buffer, is that correct?
Um, HCD recommends, what I have heard is twenty-five to thirty-five percent capacity in your final inventory. Now, there's no statutory obligation to include that buffer, and many cities are choosing to adopt a narrower buffer than that. And so Pleasanton, as we did in our last cycle, is likely to go in that direction, not not zone for as much of a of a buffer in our housing element. But remember, we're talking again about and this sort of interim step, which is which sites are we going to carry forward into the sequel review? And we think it's prudent to be a bit more generous and have a few more sites because it's quite likely that some are gonna drop off the list as we go through the process.
And and I understand the thought process in having a buffer. And I do believe I did go on the HCD website, and I think it was ten to fifteen percent is their recommendation. But maybe there's different levels. I'll look at that again. So and I I I fully understand that that it's prudent at this stage to have some buffer. I just really think we need to be realistic in understanding that even with a fifty percent buffer, which is on the extreme high side, it's really much more than that because we're building in the buffer on these other layers. So I I would like to ask two other questions. One of them is that you explained why we are, how we are able to carry forward. Was it how many units from the fifth cycle? But you and I had a conversation yesterday. I was surprised, maybe everyone else fully understands it, but I I really would like to make sure everyone understands that what are the consequences of carrying over those projects? What you and I talked about, what that would be?
So has been included in the inventory for two cycles, which all of our previously designated house, high-density housing sites have been, they were designated in the fourth cycle, and we're moving into the sixth cycle. The city has to allow projects with a minimal increment of affordable housing, I believe it's twenty percent, to be approved by right, meaning without, there's no discretion as to approval or disapproval of those projects. That used to carry a bit more weight than it does these days because other provisions of state law, like the Housing Accountability Act and SB three thirty, effectively make most housing approvals by right, you know, to to a greater or lesser degree, because once a site is zoned for housing, the city has more difficult time denying a project when, once it's in our general plan and once it's zoned.
But we do have the ability to enforce our our stated published standards. We have an objective standard related to design review, we will still have that authority. It's just you can't flat out say, no, I don't like it.
Objective standards, but not the discretionary review that we have. And and if it's by right, is is by right the same as ministerial, so it does not go through the public process and there are no public hearings, is that right?
Um, I don't believe it precludes the city from holding a public hearing, but it but it does limit the our ability to deny the project as as Brian as Brian said, although we can apply our objective design standards.
Okay, um, so then, let's see, I, we talked, you explained what SEQA was. And one of the the speakers made a comment about the tearing down buildings, we we through CAP two point O, we're really concerned about our carbon footprint and so, and we know tearing down buildings and rebuilding really is very hard on our carbon footprint. So does the EIR, will that be captured in that? Or can you tell us what the EIR will capture in the way of environmental review?
EIR will be what's called a program level environmental review because it's a citywide document that will is looking at a broad, broad range of of land use changes across the entire city. You know, I, we haven't got into the detail yet to know exactly how things like demolition will be treated. But certainly, overall, a change of use, which could include the demolition and removal of buildings, construction activity associated with new construction, and the air quality emissions of those sorts of things are typically part of environmental review that that we, of the sort we will be doing.
Okay, thank you for your, for answering my questions. I appreciate it.
All right, Vice Mayor Arkin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brown. Yes, Ms. Clark, if you could just address, I just have one question. What are the advantages and disadvantages of putting a site through the environmental review process, which that's what we're deciding tonight, not final site selection? What is the advantage and and disadvantages of doing that? Regardless of whether we pick that as a final site or not?
So putting it through the environmental review does not tie the city's hands or compel us to approve that particular range of sites that are identified in the in the SEQA document. We can knock sites off of the list and adopt a, you know, a project with meaning group of sites to be rezoned that's different from that. But it's, while it's, while it's easy to take sites off the list and remove them from the analysis because you're always reducing impact in that respect, or generally reducing impact in that respect, it's much harder to add new sites in. And that's the reason, one of the reasons why we're recommending a slightly larger and more expansive list be considered in the environmental analysis. It's a more conservative basis for that environmental review. It's gonna analyze a bigger, you know, a more sort of more of a worst-case scenario in terms of potential impact, but also again, gives us the flexibility to to knock sites off. Adding sites on is 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 more difficult because you have to have to go back and redo and update your debt analysis to account for any potential additional impacts of adding new sites.
So if I could just briefly follow up on that, so if there were, if there was a site that we put through tonight, but we did not choose in the final selection, what implications may that have on that piece of property that it did go through our environmental review but didn't get selected? Is is there any? And if so, what would that be?
The implication potentially would be that if at a later date, the city wanted to, or an applicant was interested in bringing forward a housing project, it would likely make it simplify their their subsequent environmental review because they would have already gone through some level as part of the housing element. However, those rezonings are also discretionary actions on the part of the city, and there's, there would be no obligation just because it had gone through an environmental review to decide to rezone it. But if the city was was supportive of a future change, then it would make that process potentially a little bit easier going forward. And then maybe sort of speaks to Councilmember Balch's question about no net loss is that we know that when we, if we develop a site with less units than were counted in our in our inventory, that we have to identify potentially additional sites for rezoning to sort of make up for that deficit of units that were not built that we sort of anticipated might be built in our housing element. And so it would be advantageous for sites that have already been vetted to some degree through our process and through a SEQA review to facilitating that perhaps necessary rezoning that might happen a few years from now.
Okay, but there would be nothing that would preclude us from including something later if it hadn't gone through the EIR process. It just would be a little more work and a little more time-consuming.
Yeah, exactly. Like in, like any, any project, any action, right? If it's not, if it hasn't been previously analyzed, you have to take it through a SEQA review. And so that work would be done whether as a addendum or supplement to the previous document or as a standalone environmental review.
Great.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't describe it as a little more work in every case. Sometimes if it's, if it's a a big site, you know, it might even require its own EIR, which is months and months and months. Most of them, we could probably get away with something less than a full EIR. But SEQA has a very specific process that you need to follow. It's not just you do the analysis and send it out with the staff report.
Thank you. Okay, council member Balch?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I I that's exactly where I was going if staff could elaborate because no net losses is new this cycle, as I recall, although we dealt with it at the tail end of five. So if I may, Director Clark, kind of like you've just said, if we've, if we've gone through this process at a very high density, but the ultimate project that possibly comes forward is much lower, my understanding is we have a very prescribed amount of time to backfill to demonstrate capacity somewhere else. And having sites go through the EIR possibly, and and I'll maybe stop there, but would allow us to backfill. But but should we need to do an EIR for a site, it might become difficult to comply with that backfill. Is that correct or is my understanding incorrect?
Yeah, you you stated that that correctly, that that if we do make findings under no net loss that determine that we do need to to rezone additional sites, and you needed to do a full environmental review of a new site, that that could make that timing more challenging. So, you know, one of the concepts we've talked about is having sort of a list of sites that's encompassed in our EIR and then kind of a, kind of a B list or a backup list that will be sites that might have gone through an environmental analysis of at least, you know, been vetted with some degree of support by the city council as a future housing site, even if they're not, they don't quite make the cut to be in the housing element this cycle. And then that makes that that no net loss rezoning decision and action simpler for the community and for the council.
Okay. And then well, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay, and our our fifth council member, fourth with me, council member Narin?
Thank you. So just, I wanted to follow up also on the net loss. Ellen, isn't the point, one of the reasons to have this fifty percent buffer, that we have several sites that don't get picked to get close to the thirty-one hundred and and instead we have a number that we can have as this no net loss list to deal with it as the time comes to fall back onto?
Yeah, that that would be an option available to the council would be to sort of create, create the second, a secondary list. It's not reflected in our housing element inventory, but nonetheless, it's a list that we have of sites that we know are, you know, potentially suitable for housing and that could be rezoned in the future if if needed.
Okay, all right, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, you asked all my questions, so we're, we're, we've got, finished our question period. And city attorney, would you like to describe the next?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I, that discussion brought forward another com- question that I have to ask.
As long as it's very simple and general, please.
It is general. So again, back to a fifty percent buffer that is again, layers of their density on top of it. One of the factors that really plays in here is anything that is zoned as a result of Senate Bill three thirty cannot ever be unzoned, correct? So if we are, and I realize at this stage, we're not zoning, we're simply doing the EIR. But if at the point that we do make, submit our list and the items then go forward to zoning, it it can never be unzoned, is that true, because of Senate Bill three thirty?
Senate Bill three thirty says that you cannot downzone or remove a residential zoning designation unless you rezone other sites. So you you can trade, but you, you know, you have to find an alternative site essentially for the site that you're downzoning or rezoning to a non-residential use.
Okay, well, that's interesting. So but, um, so if we are overzoned, you know, because of this larger buffer, we would still have to maintain that larger buffer. We wouldn't be able to. Okay, that's great. Thank you. I get it. Appreciate that.
Okay, all set. Okay, thank you. All right, councils asked their questions. City Attorney, would you like to describe the next step?
Yeah, Mayor, as I mentioned at the last meeting, council members Testa and Balch each live within five hundred feet of a potential site on the list. Both have received advice from the State's Fair Political Practices Commission that based on an exemption in the Political Reform Act, they still may take part in the discussion and decision to approve the list as a whole and general policy decisions applicable to all the properties on the list. However, the commission also pointed out that the exception may not apply to a decision to remove a site that is in proximity to their homes or a decision of discussion of parameters for such sites that do not apply to all the the sites on the final list. Therefore, staff will be addressing sites twenty-five and twenty-six individually first so that council members Testa and Balch have the opportunity to refrain from participating in the sites in proximity to their homes. And then once the city council determines whether these two sites should be included on the list, and if so, what the appropriate density should be, the council will then discuss and decide on the other sites on the on the list. So I just wanted to point that out before we begin our discussions.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna start with it, site twenty-five, that is in the proximity to council member Testa's home. So with great respect, we will ask that you step out of the virtual room for a short period of time. And we will come up with some numbers and we will invite you back for the rest of the property discussions. And we will come up with some numbers and we will invite you back for the rest of the property discussions. Okay? Jocelyn, can you help us with that?
Yes, we will do so.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, staff, let's talk about site twenty five. That is the school district site.
I'm I'm gonna bring up just a couple of uh slides just to uh just to orient you to the site before you begin. That's okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, okay, perfect. Um, so the two questions that we're asking the council to consider tonight for site twenty five, and this is gonna be the same question that's asked for all of the sites, is should the site remain in the preliminary inventory for further consideration? And then secondly, if included in the inventory, is the recommended density range appropriate? Um, so this is site twenty five. Uh, it comprises about ten acres. Uh, the portion of the site owned by Pleasanton Unified School District, that includes district offices, the uh, the 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 school, uh, the maintenance yard that's there. It does not include the upper play fields portion of the site, just to to emphasize that. So it's just really that developed portion of the site uh towards uh First and Burnell. Um, the recommended density range is uh what we're calling medium density, fifteen to twenty five units to the acre. And that capacity assumption at the mid-range is about two hundred and four units. Um, the planning commission's recommendation on the site was to include it in inventory.
Oh, um, we're not doing anything for mixed use. So if somebody wanted to develop the project to be part businesses and part residential, that's not a part of the discussion this evening. Is that right?
No, the city council can discuss any aspects and preferences that you would like for the for any of these sites. So uh if, for example, you wanted to see uh some commercial component, perhaps fronting First Street, uh that that would be an appropriate thing to note uh as part of this discussion. Um, it may ultimately change the capacity of the site in terms of the housing units, because if you dedicate a certain amount of the site to non-residential use is obviously is going to use up a little bit of that of that land area. Um, and so may have the result of reducing the density um and capacity proportionately to that. So um, you know, it would be good to know what sort of a amount or proportion of the site you were thinking of as mixed use, if that was a direction that you wanted to go.
Okay, um, with the council's approval, uh I don't see anybody raising their hand. Can I just call on you and ask for, this is a discussion and it is um, shall we include it? And if we do, what should the density units be for the environmental study, not for rezoning? I wonder, Councilmember Narim, would you like to start?
Sure. Um, well, I think it should be included into the EIR. I think that the density is okay. I absolutely would not go any higher. I think it's important to remember that we want to get the density of projects or of sites at what we think the maximum we could be so that we have the impact. We can always lower it, but I, as I think we discussed earlier, you know, it's harder to increase it if you didn't do it in the EIR. So I would um absolutely support keeping this uh in. I I would like to ask a question that the fifteen to twenty units to the acre, uh perhaps of either our planning director or city manager. I mean, what does that look like? Because I do think there's a valid point that whatever ends up there needs to be consistent with that neighborhood across the street. I guess I'd be on the north side. Um, and what I'm really saying is that, you know, two-story uh maximum so that we're consistent through there. And perhaps maybe uh somebody could comment on that.
Yeah, fif- fifteen to twenty-five units to the acre is typically gonna yield um a townhouse type project. Um, so at the lower end, uh, two stories uh would have usually tuck under parking and then a certain amount of increment of surface parking for for guests typically. Um, so some examples, um, the Endarus project on West Los Pecitas is about sixteen units to the acre. That's a, that's a, that's a somewhat comparable. You'll get something a little closer together, maybe going up to to three stories in in portions, but on the side of this size, you could generally cluster some of those taller buildings towards the center of the site and probably mitigate. You know, you wouldn't have necessarily three-story buildings wrapping the entire uh property. You could blend it in with some mixed, some mixed heights, but but two to three stories would be would be typical.
And on the other end, if it went up to twenty-five, as you recall, we approved a whole bunch of projects at thirty units per acre. It would probably be garden apartments, a lot of surf, it would be entirely surface park. Um, it'd probably look a lot like uh civic center apartments across the street from City Hall. A little bit more room to play around with for open space than we had when we did all those others.
Okay, well, I, you know, I'm okay with that. I certainly would not want to go any higher. Um, and I think the other question I maybe would have for the district, and maybe it's not appropriate, but um, you know, there has always, there's been discussion for a few years now about uh creating some affordable housing specifically for teachers. And I know, you know, there's some requirements there, and I'm just wondering if we put this forward, how we can make sure that at least um this is a serious discussion or get some attention.
So I think that policy intent could be expressed by the council, whether it was teacher-specific housing or workforce housing in general. Um, you know, if if the if the school district themselves are not the developer of the property, um, orienting it specifically to teacher housing might be a bit more challenging, but I think in terms of is this housing that could be suitable for for folks who make the sorts of wages that that teachers and school staff um earn? Um, I think that's that's a reasonable policy objective for the site that that could be reflected in our final uh determinations and decision on this particular property.
Okay, thank you. I think that would be my comments for now.
Okay, yes, with the density of fifteen to twenty-five, Councilmember Balch.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'm I'm comfortable keeping the site in. I uh, I think the school district and us will definitely need to have conversations over the next year to discuss what their plans are and how they plan to address that. Uh, interesting on the density, though, I actually I actually think we should be thinking if we wanted to have for EIR purposes, an evaluation of possibly a little bit higher density in a portion of the site. Um, so I confirm with staff and we can see on the screen here that the Upper Burnell Field, which I remember from my parking rec days, is part of the school district site, and I see that's not included. So we're really talking the lower portion there with with uh the high school. But uh, you know, if we thought about uh the Village Parkway on the other end of Burnell at uh also at uh First Street or Stanley, uh, it steps up. So it starts at two floors or two stories at the front, and then it steps up to four in the back. And you basically do not recognize it. I understand that if you go around the backside, uh it could be uh quite large and and dense. So while I fully agree that along Abbey or or some of these streets here, we're looking at compatible with the neighborhood, if we could go a little denser for workforce housing potentially, uh, I would be supportive of that. You know, we we want our downtown to have people that will walk to it. And I think this is a neighborhood that could do that. And I'm not talking about something that looks like the Harris Street project. I'm talking about something where we're stepping up in a manner that would allow the site to be developed in such a way that topography is taken advantage of. So that the higher density stuff possibly is along the Burnell side. And we're rebuilding this intersection. First Street and Burnell is is being redesigned. So I guess in summary, I'll say I I do want to keep it in for purpose of the EIR. Uh, for purposes of the EIR, I I would be willing to look at a slightly higher density, but not on the entire site if there was some interest by the other council members in that.
Right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember or Vice Mayor Arkin?
Thank you. Um, okay, this one's a tough one, and I am speaking as a former school board member. Um, we've had a lot of public input on this one. People are concerned with the density there with, I think there are a lot of valid concerns, the traffic impacts, the cut through traffic in certain neighborhoods around this area. Um, it is next on one side next to um historic homes. On the other side, it fronts a major, you know, major street in our downtown. My preference, um, after think, and I understand the school district's perspective completely, and I know they have a plan to move elsewhere. Um, but really thinking about this one, and again, this one's a hard one, my preference would be to not include it. With that said, if the rest of you want to include it, I'm going to strongly suggest, and this is what I I feel would be um, something we could do. Um, designate it workforce housing. Uh, designate it mixed use with retail on the ground floor and reduce the density to ten units per acre, resulting in about a hundred and two units of residential. Um, my concerns with this uh and why I that would be something to look at is that it is fronting our major, a major downtown road. So having retail makes sense to me and not multiple stories of housing right in our downtown like that. Um, so that that would be my suggestion. So those are my thoughts.
We're gonna start with the hardest one. Um, you know, I I looked at some of the data that was provided by staff. And when residents took a survey about where they'd like to see homes, the uh number one answer by far was new housing should make use of existing infill sites like vacant properties and older office and retail centers rather than building out into currently undeveloped areas. And I too challenge, I'm really challenged with this site. Uh, I've heard the neighbors and they voiced legitimate concerns about traffic and noise and um just the change in the feel of our entry in in that gateway into our historic community and our historic homes. So uh it's like, like Valerie said, or like all three of you have said, this is really, really a challenging one. But that site, walk to downtown, walk to schools, um, walk to grocery stores, walk to shopping even at the hardware store down the street. It really is a wonderfully centrally located site, and the school district has talked about this for years about relocating uh out of that core, that very, very important area of downtown Pleasanton into an area where um they can more run a business offices and we can get operations out of there. It's not, the Village High School and the school district have a lot of traffic coming and going there. All you have to do is look at their parking lot. So I would support a lower, a lower density, and I'm hoping that we can find some number. Um, because this is just the environmental study, it's not the final decision, of course. And we can add that retail component maybe at a later date, but I heard Valerie say a hundred and two units. And I've heard others say considerably more than that. So the staff recommendation is two hundred units.
May, if if I may, in interest of interest of moving forward, since we have several others, maybe we stay with staff recommendation. I'll come off of the higher density uh step, at least for EIR. We can see what the impacts are. If everyone's comfortable with that, we we move forward.
I'm not comfortable with that. I want to come down to something closer to a hundred and fifty. Valerie, would you accept that? Councilmember Arkin.
I'd rather go even lower than that. I think a hundred and two, if if it's mixed use. Um, that that's a lot of housing on that corner. Um, and a lot of impacts to neighborhood, multiple neighborhoods. Um, I'd prefer to see it the hundred and two. Uh, I'd consider a little more than that if um if need be.
Uh, there is no retail on First Street. When we uh looked at rezoning the gas station all the way down, it's all the way down by uh Vineyard Avenue. I mean, it's homes on First Street. So I too thought mixed use and I even brought it up, but um, they're really, on that side of the street, it's residential and without, except for the school district, of course. Um, I'm looking for Councilmember Narim, a little flexibility in the units. Of course, this is just for the studies, and I realize this is just for the studies. But uh we have really scared this neighborhood into thinking that there's going to be some massive housing development in there. And I'd like a smaller number.
Excuse me. Um, you know, I'm, I would have a hard time with a project that came in with three stories, even if it was clustered in the center of the uh of the site. Um, you know, I might be willing to go down a little bit, but I think again, we've got to go back to what we're doing here. We're trying to get a high-end worst case for the EIR. We're not trying to design a project. And so I'm, I I certainly hear the concern. I want this to be generally compatible with the neighborhoods. Um, I think traffic is a concern, but the good news is that there's already a project to improve that intersection that I think is scheduled to start this summer. And that combined with finishing up uh eighty-four, Highway eighty-four, the widening and the interchange on six eighty, you know, will pro- will provide relief. And I I think the other piece of this is that um, you know, there's currently plenty of traffic associated with this school district site with um employees coming and going, maintenance trucks, you know, you name it. And uh, I'm not, you know, I don't know, and I don't think we want to get into it at this point, what that incremental amount will be, but it's not going from zero to whatever the number of trips would be uh on housing here. It's it's the delta something much less than that. So, I mean, I I would prefer to leave it at the twenty. I mean, it takes to keep it on the site, I would back down to fifteen, which would be about a hundred and fifty units. But that's about as far as I'm willing to go, given what the objectives of the EIR are.
We could do that minimum capacity, as you said, which is a hundred and fifty-three units, and still take into consideration the site could be used for some commercial use to uh to capitalize on the school district. They can have the funds they need to relocate. Um, so it is a mixed use zoning.
I'll go, uh, you know what? I'll I'll agree to, since this is just the EIR process and not the final site selection, I'll agree to the hundred and fifty units.
Hundred and fifty and maybe some retail?
Some sort of mixed, I think it has to be some sort of mixed use. And I don't know, we mentioned, Ms. Clark mentioned the workforce housing can be a requirement. I think that would be good to include as well.
Okay, that sounds fair. Councilmember Balch.
So uh, if I may, a quick question of staff. So I I noticed we've been doing a range uh of of density. Uh, obviously, we talked about it, or you talked about it at the beginning of your presentation, fifteen to twenty-five here. So apologize, we can set as as the council appears to be going with a specific number density, or do we need a range?
Um, I would recommend stipulating a range at which the midpoint would give you about a hundred and fifty units. So um, the the state would look, if we if we just said has to be a hundred and fifty or less, the state would say, hmm, that's pretty restrictive, right? Someone's got to come in with a hundred and fifty units project, and there's nothing else that you're willing to look at. So my recommendation would be um, a ra- I think a range of about, it's a little different from what we have come up with, but a range of eight to twenty units to the acre would would yield about um, a hundred and fifty units at the midpoint. Um, so that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, fifteen is one fifty-three according to the minimum capacity rate. So ten acres times fifteen to a hundred and fifty.
Would be the midpoint capacity.
Yeah, so I'm perfectly happy to put more houses elsewhere, but this one I think is highly sensitive. So uh, I I feel like we have uh consensus here for the most part. So one fifty-three is a main point. Workforce housing as well as some options for mixed use uh for for future discussions.
Um, I think, I'm I'm sorry, I just, I think it would be helpful just to incorporate that in the motions for the record. Um, if if that could be done.
Can I ask a question on this one?
I'm, well, wait a second. Um, Councilmember Balch has his hand up.
I'm sorry.
Member Balch.
Sorry, so I apologize, staff. When you said a range of eight to twenty, uh, I'm not seeing your ring, your midpoint there. Can you maybe maybe can do some quick math and check that? And then secondly, so I I can support the mixed element, but I'm gonna just ca- caution us to be careful on that because uh we have a lot of vacant retail already on Main Street. So I'm not quite sure putting retail on First Street at this corner is appropriate, but I would like to still reiterate my support for workforce housing or teacher housing. So um, you know, trying to get to a consensus where we're all trying to get to a consensus where we're all there. Maybe staff gives us a range that works for the number everyone's trying to come up with, but at the same time, if workforce housing could be in and mixed use left out, that would be good or supportable, I guess I should say for me.
Then for clarification, if we use a range of eight to 20, that would allow for 81 to 203 units with a midpoint density of 142 units.
Oh, I think I carried a fast.
Is the cleanest.
Are you what you need, Councilmember Bolch?
Yeah. So if you'd like, I mean, I'll make the motion eight to 20 density included in the EIR with workforce housing underlying request.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, good. I'm glad you have a second. I'm just going to, Councilmember Arkin, she had a question.
Yeah, okay. So first of all, I'm a little confused. I thought we are approving ranges on every single site because I thought we have to come up with a actual number to get to. So we are going with, that wasn't clear to me, that we are going with the midpoint on every a range on every single one and going with the midpoint as our number?
That's that's the sort of the framework of the capacity assumption. So we're we're building the capacity based on ranges because the state does, if we just came in with a single density number, they would say that's that's too narrow, right? You you need to provide a range for some flexibility. But we would pin our assumed capacity at the midpoint in that range. So the actual density could be, you know, from the low end to the high end, but the midpoint is the assumption, and that's what we have to use to build the capacity assumption. So it's a bit of a, it's a bit, it's just kind of, it's a bit of a challenge in just the way we have to construct the inventory to hopefully meet the HCD review expectation.
Okay, so my comment on this one is that range at the high point is too high for me. I can't go with that. That's 203. That's the assumed capacity on this one on the staff report is 204. So basically, we're keeping it roughly the same. Or or very little difference. The maximum capacity was 254 and we took it down to 203. I'd like to see the maximum a little lower than that. I just think it's too, it it's it's too high. If we, I haven't, I just have an issue with that. Could, could I ask for a friendly amendment to make it a little bit lower? I I really would like, I really would like to see it at 150 or as close to that as you can get.
So I I think I'm compromising to target the 150 council member or vice mayor Arkin. I mean, I, that is my intent. Trying to do that with the guidance staffs giving me, so I'm open to a friendly amendment. But I think we need to realize that we need to come into a range with a midpoint that equals the target number you're trying to get to, right?
Well, maybe I misspoke then. I would like to see that as the high, the high range, the around 150 is the high on it. Maybe that's, that's what I'm getting at. Before I understood that we're really doing ranges and not trying to focus on a a different assumed capacity number and more of a range. I would like to see it.
Oh, step, oh, sorry.
Can we, so staff? Did we say a density range of?
A range of, a range of 18 to 14 would yield 142 at the top end. But you are going to end up with an assumed capacity that's that's somewhat lower for for that site as a result. It's just something you have to acknowledge that if you drive down the top end, your your midpoint will go down as well.
Yeah. Okay, I I would like to see the top end being as close to 150 as possible. If we could get there, I would be supportive.
Well, let's see if we've got the votes for this without the amendment, eight to 20.
Yeah. I I'm, this, this is the environmental study, right? So it doesn't mean we're approving it. And I agree, 150 sounds like a really big, 200, it sounds like a big number. But it doesn't mean we're going to approve that. It just means we're going to study it. And this is traffic impact area. I believe it's Empire, this traffic impact study is going to come back. That First Street is just so highly impacted. It's going to be really difficult to put these large numbers there. I would really like to see us work together on this first site. I know it's one of the hardest and the one that we've seen the most feedback on. I think there are so many sites that are going to be easier to put density on. We're really close here, guys. Can we try just a little harder?
Well, I don't, I apologize. I'm compromising a lot from where my initial position is because I I I see validity in the comment. So so the 150 target, I I don't mind trying to target that. I apologize. I'm just trying to work within the framework, staff saying that we need a range. And I think that if we lower the range too significantly much, mind you, we're working against the school district's factor on what they may be trying to achieve. I still would like to have a density that supports workforce housing. So if we get to a point where they're not able to do that because it's all single family, 1.4 million dollar average home in Pleasanton, that's not workforce housing for teachers. That's what I'm trying to achieve. So I'm open to suggestions. I
I see some of the project having a higher density and some have a lower density. This is a pretty large site at 10 acres. So we could put higher density, let's say, towards the back for these workforce housing, which are more affordable and typically apartments and then single family that more blends in with the neighborhood more towards the front.
I think it absolutely has to be that, Mayor. I completely agree.
Yeah.
I don't know where that leaves us.
Councilmember Narum, you're the one who made the motion.
No, I didn't make the motion. I was
Me, you're right.
Yeah, comes from the ball. I was going to second it, but I, I'm a little confused about the commercial piece of this. And I'm hesitant to put it here. I would remind you of all the commercial up near the art station that we added in the last round that what, five, six years later is still empty and has never been leased. I I I I'm, I'm open to the, to allowing it, but I don't want to mandate it because I don't, I think it would be awful to end up building some commercial here that couldn't get leased or was slow to lease at the site, at that corner or along First Street.
Point of, point of clarification, I think the motion I made, if I may clarify, was to not include a commercial element as a condition. I'm not doing that, but I was including workforce housing or some element of teacher housing. I don't know if I'm wording it right, staff, but but that was what I was including. And I was not including in my motion, commercial, similar reasons with the vacancies on Main Street.
So are you open, though, to having commercial be optional? You know, if somebody went on the site and and wanted to do, you know, a small neighborhood retail and thought they could make it work. I mean, I would be open to that. I don't want to require it, I guess, is where I'm at.
Yeah, I don't want a 7-Eleven in there. That's not what I, that's not my goal. Ellen, if I could, you have, on some sites, you have minimum capacity, maximum capacity and assumed capacity, all the same number.
Right.
Is it possible we could do that on this one and just say 150 all the way across and see?
Those are generally ones where we we have a developer proposal or it just didn't quite work to calculate a density range. So we sort of plugged in almost fixed numbers for those. There's just a couple of sites that we do that for. But in general, it would be better, especially for the reuse sites, to to have a range. You know, I I would note that typically within the range, and and we have done this on other projects, is we have allowed for kind of mixed density across a site, provided that ultimately the aggregate, aggregate density does not exceed the maximum. So you could achieve a project like what Councilmember Bolch was talking about, which may be a sort of a cluster of slightly denser units that could be more workforce oriented and then some more traditional sort of single family or townhouse style units on the remainder of the site and kind of cluster the density to yield the affordable or more affordable, more affordable component.
Could we, I just, here's a suggestion. Could we change the density to the range? I think it was proposed at eight to 20. Could we change it eight to 16? That would be 81 to 163.
That's 122 at the mid range.
Including, Councilmember, or sorry, Vice Mayor Arkin, including the desire for, and staff, maybe I need assistance, including the desire for workforce housing and Mick and just achieving the density across the site. Is it, as per what you just said to Director Clark, right?
Yes, that could be a stated allowance that you could sort of make blended density, including some components of the project that would be, the building would be a little higher density type product.
I'd be willing to amend the motion to that.
Okay, and then the retail component, component?
I'd say optional only, if I may. I I'm, I'm comfortable saying option. Sorry, my Zoom's acting up. Sorry, one more time, please. You you were saying?
Are you talking to me?
Yes. I'm looking at you on my screen.
Okay, um, yes, so that the retail component, I I mean, I'd like to see some sort of retail component combined in that. So that would be not required, but it would be an option or a desire type of thing.
I would prefer to leave it as an option and not make it a requirement of my motion. I am worried about vacancy retail space ghosting our community. So I I don't mind saying it is an optional item if it came forward as a project. But I would prefer that we look at the site for, well, what I've said, workforce housing for teachers as well as in achieved density that's within this range. But but we could spread it out so that we are accounting for Second Street, maybe going a little more dense in the cluster, kind of more towards the Burnell, Upper Burnell Field side.
Okay, I I would have preferred to see something stronger on the retail component.
I know.
I'll go, I'll agree to that. If that range is acceptable, I will go with it.
I believe you said eight, eight to, was it, apologize, what was your range again?
16, which I believe gets us 81 to, if I calculated right, Ms. Clark can tell me if I didn't, to 163. And I think she said the midpoint was 122. Okay.
So I'd be willing to modify my motion to that density range, eight to 16, teacher workforce housing as a required element, or at least a significantly suggested element, mixed range or mixed density across the site to achieve the density and no commercial component, but with it optional.
I'll second that.
Hey, all right, team. Thanks for working together on this because with the only four of us, a two-two split means we can't include it if, unless we can come up to something that we can agree on. All right, so we have a motion made and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bolch.
Hi.
Councilmember Narum.
Hi.
Councilmember Arkin.
I.
Mayor Brown.
Yes, I.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you, team, for working through that. I know that was a tough one. Well, now through the magic of Zoom, I guess we'll have Councilmember Bolch step out briefly and we'll bring back Councilmember Testa for site number 26, which is St. Augustine's vacant parcel at the, near their church. Okay, I think we've got everyone here. All right, staff.
So we'll do the same thing again for for site 26. I'll share my screen. We all can see that. So same questions for site 26. Should site 26 remain in the preliminary inventory for further consideration? And if included in the inventory, is the recommended density range appropriate? So those are two discussion questions.
And let's see. Last time, I was going to try to rotate. I started with Narum and then to Bolch. So Councilmember Arkin.
Okay, for this one, um, I actually think we should include it. I I don't see a compelling reason to not. And I am fine with the density range suggested.
Okay, Councilmember Testa.
I also would think it's an appropriate site. For years, the church has been asking, talking about doing housing there since the high school got eliminated. And so I think the fact that they want to use this site, I think that's an appropriate use. So I would. My one question would be, and I'll probably ask this on every site. Is this site eligible for density bonus and SP 35? So would it have the potential of going up dramatically in density through SB 35 and density bonus?
So my answer is to be yes to any site you asked a question about, because it would have a residential designation and that would make it eligible for SB 35, assuming that it met other parameters such as being, you know, potentially surrounded by urban development and not being exempt for some other reason, like having a sensitive resource or something on it. So for the most part, any of these sites that we designate could be eligible for SB 35 streamlining and for housing density bonuses. However, they would have to meet all of the requirements for SB 35 projects. That would be a a 50% affordable housing component. And to to achieve the sorts of very high height and density increases would have to be 100% affordable. So those, those, all those criteria would have to be met to make a sort of, you know, greatly increase this. But but yes, to be clear, any of these sites could be eligible for density bonuses.
Okay, well, I'll probably still ask because I think it's important to point that out. Because what we're talking about could very well become something very different. So that's, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm next to my rotation here. I wondered if you would consider a little higher density. I wanted to fit in the neighborhood. And I want to make sure that we're matched with that. I I think low density is probably not going to be tossed into a SB 35. Ramp up all of, all affordable, no parking, et cetera. But this is near an elementary school. It's not far from downtown. It's near a church. It's near really nice vintage hills neighborhoods. We did not hear concerns. I did not read a concern about the site. So could be, but I, what I'm really questioning is access. So would they come in off of Bonita, Director Clark, or, and then, then they're cutting through the parking lot? How how would access to that development work?
Jennifer might, might, might know the site better than I do. I think the primary access at this point is off, is off Bonita. But you can see, there's also a connection through the back to Burnell. But I'm not sure how feasible that is with, based on topography and so on. So Bonita would likely be the primary access. Do you know, Jennifer, if there's any other?
There is access through both. It's actually a landlocked individual parcel. So they, obviously, the church owns both of the parcels. They would have to work with the church on some type of access agreement that would be designed with the development. But right now, they do have access off of both Burnell and Bonita.
Okay, and I was talking to a resident recently, actually, earlier today. And he said, when a project was proposed there, it was a multi-story building. And that was where the neighbors really had a concern about two and, well, three and four stories affecting their privacy. So at a density of two to seven units for that 6.3 acre site, or, oh, sorry, 4.15 buildable. Are we matching the neighborhood? Or are we, are we putting in like duets, you know, common wall? That would maybe be one or two stories because on Clinton, which is one of those adjacent streets and on Bonita, there's a lot of two-story homes there.
The the surrounding neighborhood is generally one of our standard zoning designations, which is R165. So it would have a minimum of 6,500 lot size. That comes out to approximately five dwelling units per acre for our standard zone. So for the range of two to seven units at the midpoint, density would be consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods.
Okay, all right. Those are my questions. Councilmember Narum.
Yes, thank you. I I support including this. And I would go even a little further to say that this is one of six sites. uh, that this is one of six sites on the list that, uh, adjoins existing, uh, single-family houses. And I think, um, for consistency, they all ought to either go into the EIR or they all ought to be removed. And so I'm, you know, that's gonna be my general theme as we work through this, but I, I think this makes sense. I recall when, um, I think they were proposing senior apartment. And it was three and four stories and, and while we know what happened and I, I think probably rightfully so. I'm okay with this, uh, density. I do agree with you, Mayor. I would, you know, I think five to the acre as a midpoint, uh, is probably okay, which is a little bit higher than I think what they used, uh, in the capacity calculation. But I'm not sure it's something for one or two units I'd spend a whole lot of time on.
Exactly, there are bigger fish.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, with that, so we sort of, uh, came upon leave it as is and keep it in the, um, studies for environmental, kind of a motion, please.
I'll move to leave site twenty-six, Saint Augustine, in the, um, housing site list for the EIR at the current or at the density as proposed by staff.
I'll second.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Narum.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Testa.
Aye.
Mayor Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we'll bring back our Councilmember Jack Balch and then wherever Steph wants to take you. I'm gonna start on number one or, or somewhere else. We're, we're here.
We'll start on, they will start on number one. Okay, Councilmember Balch is back. Let me reshare my screen again. Uh, so now we'll turn to sites one through twenty-four and twenty-seven, same questions. Should, should the site remain in the inventory? And should any modifications be made to the density range? Oh, I'm not sharing here, sorry. Oh, no, what, what is this? Technical challenges, let me try this again. Sorry about that. Okay, can you all see my, this slide?
Yes, we can.
Another random thing from my computer. All right, um, so site one is the Lester property, although this is a, a very large piece of property. The total, the development area is considerably smaller, about fifteen acres. Um, the remainder of the site is currently proposed by the applicant. Uh, we have an active application for this project, uh, to, to remain an open space. Uh, and so in that area of development, um, a total of thirty-one units is proposed. Uh, it was the planning commission's recommendation to include this site.
Any questions or emotions?
I'll move to include Lester in the, uh, site list for the EIR at the, uh, recommended density here.
I'll second.
I have a question though, before we vote.
Yes.
Okay, um, I just wanted to, um, Ms. Clark, if you could clarify, I know there has been some, some public comment um, directed to me about this being on a, developing on a actual hillside. Can you clarify where this property is?
Yeah, it, it is, it is, it is, it is a hilly site and it is subject to measure PPQQ restrictions. So, um, part of the approval of any project here would be for conformance with measure PP and QQ. Uh, so all of the grading, the placement of the, of the, of the homes would have to meet, would have to meet those requirements. Um, so thirty-one units is the proposal and the applicant, um, um, has suggested that can be accomplished with, within the parameters established by PP and QQ. But that will be a decision of the council at the time, um, that the project comes forward for consideration.
Thank you for the clarification.
Right, and just to follow on comment, uh, this site is actually outside of our city limits, correct? And we'll have to do an annexation?
Correct, so the site does lie outside of the city limits. You can see that boundary, uh, the yellow dash line, gold dash line there. So an annexation into Pleasanton would be proposed as part of the development of the site.
So this would qualify for our, uh, above moderate housing requirements.
It, it would fall into the above, above moderate as a low-density housing project.
Got it, okay. All right, we have a motion made by Councilmember Narum and seconded by Councilmember Balch. Um, let's take a vote.
Councilmember Narum.
Aye.
Councilmember Balch.
Aye.
Councilmember Testa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Aye.
Mayor Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we're buzzing along here. Yay, next.
As they say, and now for something completely different, um, the Stone Ridge Mall, uh, housing site. Um, I think you're all familiar with this property. Um, a total of eighteen acres, uh, within the, the larger, um, site has been preliminarily identified as suitable for infill housing around the mall, uh, core building. At the midpoint, uh, I'm sorry, and that's a high-density site, so it would be actually the lower end of the range is recommended to be forty-five to seventy-five units to the acre. That yields eight hundred and ten units at the low end of the range. And obviously more than that, um, at the high end, uh, it was the planning commission's recommendation to include this property in the inventory.
I think, uh, questions, let's see, go through my list. Uh, Councilmember, um, Arkin. Oh, we've got some hands up, sorry. Just a moment, please. Uh, Councilmember Balch?
Apologize, whatever way you want to do this. Uh, so I just had some questions of staff, if I may. Uh, so, uh, sitting on the planning commission, the planning commission, uh, had before it, uh, an application by Simon Properties to put a, a couple of hundred units, I think it was four hundred and eighty units. So this is in addition to that entitlement that has already been granted at the mall site, correct?
That's correct, so there are two, um, sort of slivers of the mall property that already have a housing residential designation on them. One is down here in this sort of southeast quadrant of, of the mall. Uh, and then the other is a small piece sort of up in this area. So these, uh, units would be in addition to those that are already zoned and that are part of the, uh, forthcoming development application for residential project.
Yeah, as a clarification, um, what you had seen was a workshop on an initial application. Um, due to COVID, that application, um, did go on pause and so has not moved forward at this time. So it is not currently entitled, um, and, uh, it is our understanding that they are, um, going to be restarting that project, but as Ellen indicated, right now it is zoned for four hundred units, but, um, there is not currently an entitlement on that property.
Okay, maybe I ask for further clarification. So the eight hundred and ten, uh, the preliminary capacity recommendation would be in addition to the four hundred and eighty or so that the workshop did. Correct?
Yeah, it, it would be zoned capacity on top of what is already zoned today, which is about, is about four hundred units.
Okay, so I've just mixed up entitlement versus zoning when I just did that, so that's what, uh, Ms. Hagan was clarifying. Okay, thank you. And then, uh, another quick question, if I may, while at the mall site. Uh, seventy-five, uh, density range, seventy-five units an acre. This is one of our first times we're having this density, right? Do we remember, or could you remind us, what is the density on the four hundred and eighty-five that are already, uh, zoned?
That's zoned at forty to the acre.
Okay. And so I'll ask again, and I see Mr. Stasano on my, um, family ties here. So we've got Workday, we've got, we've got Workday, we've got Costco, we've got Stone Ridge Mall. How much more capacity at the mall do we have before we fail on, on Stone Ridge?
Well, to, to the, the mall, when we do our modeling, the mall has some additional capacity. So I think some of it is dependent on whether or not, uh, this project, this additional eight hundred units replaces that three hundred and fifty thousand square feet of future retail. Um, if it's a replacement, then the numbers aren't as, as extreme when we're doing the modeling. Um, but as you know, and what our modeling has shown for years is that, um, the Stone Ridge, it's Stone Ridge Mall intersections at capacity. Um, you know, even our, even our modeling for, uh, ten X uh, showed that, you know, they needed to use Springdale because Stone Ridge Mall is essentially full. So that southeast quadrant of Stone Ridge Mall area is, is essentially full. So if we're to choose locations, uh, to, to place housing, that's the, the least appealing. Uh, really what would be the preference from, from my perspective and from what I would like to see from a transportation side is if we develop the west side. Uh, because you have Deodora and Laurel Creek that both provide pretty convenient access to Foothill. Um, and, and it's getting out to the arterials is where the real dilemma is. Um, you know, Stone Ridge has some pretty decent capacity and its delays aren't as bad. You have Stone Ridge, um, at Johnson that has some capacity issues, but we're, we're building uh, a number of improvements through there. Uh, I really think the, the area around Stone Ridge Mall and Stone Ridge Mall Road is the, uh, is the area of concern for me. And I would say, um, you know, that southeast corners, it's there. We, we can't fit more cars in that roadway. And if you think about, you know, December and even sometimes in November, pre-pandemic, you know, it was, it was backed up to, you know, to Workday and, you know, nine cycles to get through, so that seems pretty bad.
And that's where our fire station's at. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Narum.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, continuing on with the traffic. If this eight hundred and ten units was to be put on the, uh, west side of the mall, uh, in your opinion, is there any room to increase that amount and increase that number? Or do you think we're pretty much gonna be at the end of the line?
I, I think the way kind of Ellen framed it is eight hundred and ten is the, the lower end. So that's your forty-five units to the acre, so. Um, you know, I, I, I think the modeling is gonna, is gonna have to show. Um, I, I can't give you that answer. I, I think the easiest way to say that is that, you know, if we, if the mall continues to struggle, they're gonna have to repurpose in some way. Um, we've seen a decrease in, in mall traffic. Um, if that continues or, and/or there is an actual three-day work week and two-day work from home with the surrounding offices, then that significantly changes the, the traffic pattern. And I, I can't answer that one. I would say skeptically, which is kind of my normal approach, is that we're gonna return to normal and there's gonna be a lot of traffic. And, um, I wouldn't be super excited to put more than eight hundred units out there, but I'm the one that has to get the phone calls too, so. It's, as do you, so.
Right.
Eight hundred on top, so is, is a lot.
Okay, and following up on that, you made the comment that Stone Ridge Drive was, uh, okay. Um, but I thought in my experience has been there's issues, uh, on the overpass. They're over six eighty.
I.
Really backed up and.
Yeah, so my, so my experience has been that it's less so on the actual interchange often on ramps and it's more, uh, connected to, uh, Stone Ridge at Johnson and the congestion that's there at that intersection. Because so many people traveling westbound want to head northbound and we only have a single lane there. Um, you know, the, the other two freeway interchange, uh, the, the ramps, they're T-intersections, so they're a little bit more efficient uh, in how quickly we can operate them. Um, so I haven't experienced that. Um, I think Stone Ridge, Stone Ridge Mall is also rather congested, but we have close to fourteen hundred vehicles wanting to make that left turn. And even with three lanes, that's a lot.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
And then Ellen, um, can you describe what, you know, forty-five units to the acre would look like here on the mall and up to possibly seventy-five acres, please? Um, I really, what I'm really after, I guess, is the number of stories we're talking about.
Right, yeah, forty-five is very similar to the podium, uh, piece of the vintage, uh, project at Stanley Valley Burnell. That's, that's about forty, forty to the acre, so forty-five would be in that, in that range. Um, seventy-five, you're looking at heights more like some of the projects you see across the freeway in Dublin. Not saying the architecture would be the same, but, uh, in terms of height, and those are typically, uh, five-to-six-story buildings with structure, structure.
Similar to what the Workday building looks like in terms of height.
Yes.
But is that correct?
That's right, yes.
Okay, all right, I think that's it for me, thank you.
Right, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Arkin.
Okay, on this one, um, frankly, I don't know why we're not talking about higher density at this site. Um, we have to zone for a lot of housing here. We're, we're being forced to. I think this is, I mean, it's near transit, it's near the BART, it's near two freeways, very little impact to neighborhoods. Um, the area is meant to handle bigger traffic circulation. Um, we're gonna have traffic everywhere, no matter where, where housing is going, but because there's not the impact to neighborhoods, I think that is a real plus. Um, the owner, uh, I believe it's the owner, the developer of this wants to go higher density. He, I believe, reached out to all of us. Um, they are planning on redeveloping this, um, to something different because mall traffic, it has been decreasing probably everywhere. Um, so I would like to see us go up in the range on this one. This is probably, with the amount of housing we have to zone for, this is the perfect place to put a lot of it. And we have the range currently at forty-five to seventy-five. And I know the owner, I can't, you know what, I didn't jot it down. He wanted ninety-five, I think, or he may be even higher than that. He went on high. I would go, instead of forty-five to seventy-five, I would go minimum of fifty. And at the top end, I would go ninety-five, a hundred, something in that area. I, I think this is a better place for our community to have, um, high-dense housing versus the impact to a lot of our neighborhoods. So I'm interested in going higher on this one.
Ellen, what kind of density do we have right now in the Hacienda BART station? We have the developments there. What's that density?
Those are thirty, thirty-five to forty to the acre.
So thirty-five.
The, the, the projects that were built, none of them are over thirty.
So we have nothing over thirty, wow.
We had, we did have some higher designations on some sites, but those ultimately, um, possibly the old Car America went above thirty, but the ones that were built, none of them are over thirty. Saint Anton's, both of the, um, old BRE properties closest to BART thirty.
Hmm, yeah, that, the BRE properties are the ones I'm thinking of. I know they have a name now, but, um, the yellow and blue.
Yeah, now, now it's Essex.
Essex, thank you.
Well, that's the company. I, I forget the name of the project.
The Galloway.
The Galloway. Why, I always have trouble remembering that. Okay, thank you. All right, just as a comparison, Vice Mayor Arkin, um, you have your hand up. Did you have another question?
No, that's it for me. I'll put my hand up.
Thank you. Councilmember Testa, any questions?
Yes, um, I also think that this is where we should be putting more density, but certainly it, uh, thinking that what we already have in Hacienda is, um, at thirty or forty. Yeah, doubling that would seem pretty overwhelming. Is there a reason that we haven't done a Stone Ridge specific plan? So that we could really look at how maybe we could do this? And, I mean, we'd all like to be able to keep as much of the mall as is realistic and, but it is the best location for putting more density. So why haven't we done a, a Stone Ridge specific plan to really look at the, the full area?
So, it's been a work plan item for a, uh, for, for, for a couple of years. Um, and the answer is really, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces to this, um, you know, including multiple ownerships and other, you know, just sort of coordination that's been, been difficult to, uh, to accomplish along with all of our other priorities. So, uh, it, it is something we, we think is important. I think that the, the way that this would play out is that the housing element and EIR would be used to establish an appropriate housing expectation about a housing on this site. And then we would follow up with a more detailed planning effort to, um, figure out sort of a total plan. Because I mean, I think there's a lot of questions, as Mike suggested, about where exactly the housing should be best located within the mall loop. You know, and then whether other uses should also be contemplated. So this would sort of set a bracket for. A range of housing through this process. And then we'd follow up with a bit more detailed planning along the lines of a specific plan as you're suggesting, Councilmember Testa.
Okay. Well, yeah, it would be nice to have that information, a specific plan in. In going forward at this point. So I also think that we should be looking at. I think this is a location and an opportunity to use some of our requirements. So I would like to increase the density here as well. If we have the will to do so. That's it.
Hey, we do have a range though. The range goes up to that seventy five units and. And is it fair to say that's a five or six story building? So. I know the mall, the workday building is tall. The mall is tall too, but it's not a six story building. What we had talked about is trying to fit within what's already there and all the other buildings aren't disappearing. I think some of the existing buildings, which is where Workday and Ten X have been located are four story buildings. So this would be dramatically taller. I would want to make sure if. This residential housing was near the BART station that people still had the ability to park cars, for example. And because they've got to go to the grocery store and they need to take their kids to school. So I just want to make sure that we make it look like Pleasanton. Because we've all heard that loud and clear that new development should look like Pleasanton. That's my feedback. Councilmember Testa, okay. Councilmember Balch, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, comments, maybe, you know, I'm listening because I, we have a large number to address. So I appreciate. People being willing to suggest areas where density they think is appropriate. And I do consider that. I'm hobbled by the five hundred units that are already zoned in this area. So I'm, you know, I'm not thinking it's eight, ten in my brain. I'm already thinking it's twelve hundred, thirteen hundred units. So. Maybe that's handicapping me because Lydixon is impacted. Where's the retail? I know we've got BART. But I've just heard traffic as an issue. So we don't have seventy five units an acre in our community. So I just, I just would be challenged to go much greater than that. Maybe the forty five does come up slightly to help us a bit, but. I'd be very cautious about that for my support. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Narum, any closing thoughts or a motion for something?
Well, I, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought I heard our traffic engineer say he wouldn't be comfortable. Beyond eight hundred and ten units. I, maybe he could. Jump in here. If, but if that is correct, I'm not sure. Then I, you know, I necessarily want to be. Increasing the density and further and. Risking a kick out by HCD or a kick out in the EIR. So if. Maybe Mike could comment. I also, I think we need to be cautious. We hear over and over, look like Pleasanton and just a six story. Or more apartment building, you know, look like Pleasanton. I just, I think we need to ask ourselves that question.
Right. If we have that, and if I recall correctly, it's four hundred and eighty-six with the density bonus plus eight, ten.
Right.
To, to Councilmember, both Narum and Balch's point, you are already at twelve, thirteen hundred. Because you have existing zoning. And there's no reason this can't come forward in steps.
Maybe also mention the, at the high end of the range, the seventy five to the acre, that's a capacity of over thirteen hundred units. So. The IR will analyze that bigger envelope of development and the council, based on the outcomes of the analysis, could choose if it seems like. The intersections work and Mike's happy with the outcomes from a traffic perspective. That, you know, based with that information in hand, a different decision could be made about the base density for the site.
I'm good with staff's recommendation. I too, at first penciled it in, it's like, we need to put a lot of units out there. It's a great location, but I'm not comfortable. With six story buildings out there.
If I may. I know, I keep hearing the comment, it's going to impact our schools. Of course it is. Everything we're doing tonight is going to impact our schools. We are having to zone for so much housing. It's going to impact our schools, probably like we have no idea. So that's going to be a universal thought across our town, not just this area. And the amount of housing we have to do. I'm trying to have it lessen the impacts to neighborhoods if at all possible. And this is an opportunity we have to increase density that. You know, with affordable housing, this is near two freeways and BART. So you wouldn't have to have a car since you're near BART. That is kind of one of the purposes of having affordable housing near a transit hub and reduce our carbon footprint, right? I just, I think, you know, what about a density, the suggested is forty five to seventy five? And I know this is a lot, but you know what? Our town with all of this housing we're having to zone for when it's built out, we're not going to look like the Pleasanton we do today. There's just no way around that. And I'm trying to, I'm trying, and I know we all are, to try to make it not impact our community as much as possible, but. There's going to be an impact. So I would like to see instead of the forty five to seventy five, be fifty five to ninety five. The midpoint would be seventy five versus the midpoint of sixty. And I think, again, this is probably. The most perfect area if we can, if at all possibility of having a large amount of high dense housing in our town is this spot. So I would like to see us go higher. I would suggest fifty five to ninety five. And I could make that motion, if we will. I will move that we increase the density to fifty five to ninety five at the Stone Ridge Mall, site number two.
Councilmember Testa.
So. My question to Mr. Tosano. I, what I heard was. That there is too much uncertainty right now because we do not have a plan. We don't have a Stone Ridge specific plan. And that given our pre pandemic. Conditions. It would have been devastating to increase, to do that kind of density. But. Mr. Tosano, are you saying that? If in fact, there were significant changes. You addressed workdays, work from home changes and. Changes to what the mall is actually going to be. That. That greater impact could be acceptable? Is that what you were saying? It's just the conditions that existed pre pandemic would have made this unacceptable?
Yes. Just to clarify on what I was trying to say. With the eight hundred units, that's what I was envisioning, right? So as Councilmember Balch had noted, right? I'm picturing the four hundred units and I'm picturing the eight hundred units and then the potential for three hundred and fifty, three thousand additional square feet of retail. And if that continues at pre pandemic and doesn't fall off. It is a concern to add that eight hundred units. If you picture the mall, you have Foothill and Dublin Canyon. That's level of service F. Every morning, you can't make that left turn within three cycles. You look at Stone Ridge and Stone Ridge Mall, every afternoon, you can't make the left turn to get to the freeway within three cycles. When we looked at Costco and when we looked at Ten X and even when we looked at Workday. We were considering the need for an overpass widening, right, for the westbound direction, eastbound direction. We have three lanes and. Westbound, we have two lanes. And so we were looking at that as well. So. If. If the pandemic doesn't. Change things significantly, right? If we go back to the status quo, then I, I think looking at that eight hundred is gonna show probably a number of impacts that. We have. So we're going to look at that full range. So we'll be able to see, I think Ellen said it was thirteen hundred. I don't remember the exact number. My guess is that that eight hundred is going to show a number of impacts and improvements that are necessary. The thirteen hundred is going to be even more. You know, you can study the higher density. But I think it's just going to show a greater number of impacts as we move forward. Did that answer your question? Or did I just answer the question I wanted to answer?
I think, I think you answered your own question, yeah. You didn't give me the answer I wanted. Just make it all work, Mike. So I still would, I would support the motion because I would like to find a way for us to be able to. Make this a location that would. Take more of our density and relieve more of our other parts of our community.
Okay, and I'm going to add on to that question maybe to Ellen Clark or the city manager, Brian Dolan. With each development project, you get direct fees. To increase the roads and infrastructure. So if a large project came to the Stone Ridge Mall region. You should have funds for roads and infrastructure upgrades. So whether it's an increase the width of the. Stone Ridge overpass for, for six eighty or at Foothill and five eighty, shouldn't you have the? Impact fees to offset the additional traffic?
We definitely would collect fees, but. It wouldn't be anywhere near the expense to cover the expense of, for example, adding a lane to the overpass. Because when you calculate those fees. There's a lot of existing traffic. That creates the problem. So the new traffic is only a percentage. And it's our responsibility to. You know, to pay what our current residents are already paying. In some instances, they want the project so bad that they're willing to pay. But if you put a burden, you have a site that you put in your housing element and say, if you build this, you're going to have to build a twenty five million dollar. Overpass project. And that's, I mean, HCD will look at that and say, nobody's going to build that project. This site doesn't work.
They want all of it, just some of it. Okay, Councilmember Balch.
Well, since we have a motion and a second on the floor, I'm not going to be able to support the motion based on what I'm hearing on the traffic impacts. So I will declare that. And I will say, once that motion hopefully dies, I'll be willing to support staff recommendation. Call the question.
Well, you need a majority for that, but. I think it's a great location. We've already got the four hundred and eighty-six there and that's where I'm concerned. Then eight, ten range to a thirteen fifty range is a big, big range because. You're looking at forty five to seventy five. That's almost a doubling of. Not quite, but almost a doubling of ranges. I mean, it's a huge housing range and I agree with Vice Mayor Arkin. This is a great location for additional housing. But eight hundred and ten to one thousand three hundred and fifty is a huge portion of our. Three thousand one hundred that we need to find a home for. When you look at it that way, we need to find a home as Ellen Clark showed for thirty one hundred housing units. Well. A thousand of them going to the mall is a big, big chunk of it, but I'm fine increasing the number. I will support that. I just, if, if the motion can be reduced. Ninety five units to the acre just doesn't sound like Pleasanton. Just a little too high for me. Councilmember Arkin.
Yes, I just want to remind everyone, the developer is interested in going higher, much higher. So they, there is someone interested in making this work with the higher numbers. So. You know. I think that just adds to the, you know, to my motion that, you know, this, this could be a project that works because we have a developer interested, number one. But for all the other reasons I stated, which I won't go over again, it's the most perfect site in our town to put additional. High dense housing. So. If we can't support it fifty five to ninety five. Well, we're currently at forty five to seventy five and I'd like to go up from that. So. Mayor Brown, you seem like you're interested in going up.
Yeah, fifty five to seventy five will increase that assumed capacity. And by the way, the builder and developer never contacted me. So I, you're talking about things I don't, I'm not aware of. But fifty five to seventy five is about the most that, I mean, that brings that bottom up and it increases the assumed capacity. To hopefully something closer to a thousand units.
Could we go sixty to eighty?
You are so good at this. Creeping, creeping up.
To the acre is nine hundred and ninety, yes.
So that's where, if that midpoint was, the assumed capacity was right around a thousand, I could support it. We've got some hands up. Shall we listen to what some of the other council members are stating? How about that? And I know this is only number two, but we did hit a few others, but let's try to move them forward. These are the hard ones. Councilmember Balch.
So maybe I'm the only one hearing our traffic engineer saying that there's nine cycles to get through the intersection. So whether a developer wants to build or is saying they want to build or not. We have nine cycles to get through an intersection in our community and you're saying to put another thousand houses there? So I'm having a hard time because there's already five hundred units there, already five hundred units. You're starting at five hundred. You're not starting at zero. And I want to go back to the comment made mayor that you made. We could step up, you know, we could do this in stages in the future. So I just would urge some caution. Lydixon is one of our most impacted schools. I know it will impact all of them, but I just, I mean, are we, are we. Frankly damning the northeast to traffic because we think it's the best site in our community? And there's a lot of what ifs. So I could move a little bit in the spirit of cooperation. I mean, fifty five, excuse me, fifty to seventy five. But if we get much more than seventy five, we do not have seventy five units an acre housing in our community. I'm sorry. I just think we should be very cautious about. Going to ninety five. So, thank you.
Okay. And I heard twenty five billion to increase a lane going over six eighty. But I heard the traffic engineer say the problem was at the five eighty interchange and I don't know what that cost is. Before I go to you, Councilmember Narum, could Mike Tosano comment? It never should have been a level F in that part of town. That's a pretty significant. I know we had done some improvement on the freeway entrance at five eighty and Foothill. What can we do? What do you need to improve that?
We need, so. We can have level of service F because we have a general plan policy that allows level of service F at our freeway ramps, unfortunately. But that's why it's F. We did make modifications. But the number of volume continues to increase that want to either get to the BART station or get to Workday. And as that volume increases, the drivers do not elect to take the next intersection down. So they all turn left at Foothill and Dublin Canyon. They don't use Deodora and they don't use Laurel Creek to get to their destination. That's why I said that. If, if the housing's put on the west side and that's where their destination is, there's an improvement or a possibility for the. For the traffic to not be so negatively impacted. I did say though, that both five eighty and six eighty. Interchanges, the overpass over six eighties also, that's the one that would need, that Brian had mentioned would be the widening. Five eighty Dublin Canyon is. Is just another intersection that's at capacity. We have a lot of cut through traffic that comes down Dublin Canyon. We closed off Laurel Creek, which is really nice, but it put, you know. Two hundred extra vehicles per hour through that intersection instead of through the neighborhoods, which is good, but also adds to the traffic. Two hundred extra vehicles per hour through that intersection instead of through the neighborhoods, which is good, but also adds to the traffic.
But if you had housing next to Workday or housing next to ten X, people can live and work together. I mean, that's part of the goal. And when Workday was going to build at what now is the ten X site, they're the ones that were pushing for that four hundred and eighty-six units. Because they wanted those live-work units. That's that's at least part of the best I recall. So I mean, you could have people living near their jobs and that would be great and they wouldn't be on the road. Council member Darren.
Thank you. Um, well, you know, I'm not able to support increasing that based on what I hear the traffic engineer saying. Uh, and I will point out that um, the range in the EIR is gonna go from eight hundred to over thirteen hundred and that's in addition to the already four hundred and eighty. And you know, I, there have already been a number of improvements made there. Uh, widening Stone Ridge, I think it's Stone Ridge Mall at. Stone Ridge by the fire station. They've added another lane. There's been another lane added at um. You have to help invite there, but by what was the old safe way to try to move this and we're still. Having cars sitting three-plus cycles. So I think we need to be really careful. You know, people living there, if they need to get a child to Lydicson or heart, I mean, they're gonna be driving. There's not gonna be public transportation through there. You know, mayor, you know that from wheels and the wheels route. So. You know, there's gonna be cars involved. And so I I just, I think we need to be a little careful, uh, and particularly without a. Kind of a specific plan or a master plan for the area to really better understand uh what's going on there. I think we're just asking for for problems at that part of town and, you know, some of our um. You know, our our businesses that were two of our large companies that I think we're all very proud have chosen Pleasanton to be home. The last thing I think we wanna do is create such an unbearable situation for their employees. Particularly to go home at, you know, five o'clock or whatever that they're like, you know, I'm not, I'm not adding any more. Sites here, I'll go somewhere else. So, you know, I think we just need to be somewhat cautious here.
I think we also have Kaiser's owned for housing there too.
We do. Actually, that's a really good point. That's um, their parking lot has some zoning on it from the current cycle.
Council member uh, Arkin.
Okay, I will, um, I will amend my motion to just a tad higher. I'm compromising a lot. I, instead of forty-five to seventy-five, fifty to eighty. Which is just five units an acre on each end increase. And I just wanna address with this. That, yes, there are gonna be traffic impacts that are going to need to be addressed, just like probably other areas too with this housing element. And the school impacts, again, of course, I probably understand the school impacts more than anyone here. And of, they are definitely going to need to be addressed in that part of town and possibly other parts of town. There's a lot to be addressed with the schools. Keep that in mind as we continue with other sites on this list, but definitely there's impacts. There's no doubt. That will need to be addressed. Um, so I amend my motion to fifty to eighty.
All right, so to, do you accept that as a second? Council member Testa?
Absolutely.
Okay, any more discussion? It seems that people have found their spots. So could we take a vote, please?
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Aye.
Council member Testa?
Aye.
Council member Bolch?
Aye.
Council member Narum?
Aye.
Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'm probably gonna say this every time, but thanks for everyone's flexibility to come, to come to a spot that everybody feels comfortable. Again, just the environmental studies. Of Site Three, Donlin, another hot topic. We're gonna put all the tough ones in front.
Off mute. Um, Site Three is the Donlin School Site, uh, five and a half acres of the existing school property. Recommended for density range of five units to the acre, which is the uh similar to what's around it. The arm are, sorry. Our one sixty-five zoning that surrounds the property uh that yields a capacity of twenty-eight units. And it was the planning commission's recommendation to include this site.
Questions of staff? Like council member Testa?
Um. Actually, I don't have any questions. I I would like to make a motion, so.
Okay, staff recommendation?
No. I. Would you like me to make the motion or wait?
You said you wanted to make a motion, so I'm all ears.
Okay, um, I would like to make a motion that this site be removed um from. The housing element entirely. Um, clearly, we have, we've just discussed the. Impacts on the schools. We heard our community members. I I was even, um, I mean, we've heard so much from this neighborhood. This site was, um, we allocated money in our. School bond to build additional capacity on this land. And when we are increasing by twenty percent our housing throughout this community, but. We are liquidating the sites, the land that are. That remains for possible future sites. I think that that is short-sighted and a mistake. We've sold. Our district has sold quite a few um potential. School sites and our community. Has absolutely felt the the consequences of that with overcrowding. I actually, the representative from the school district even acknowledged the overcrowded schools and. Need for space for our students. My motion is to remove this site from the housing element.
Right, so we'll second. Or any other questions, comments, or modifications?
I I will second. Um, and I will comment, um. As I just mentioned about keeping in mind the school impacts. I, I know the school district wants to sell the property and I, and as I understand it, they're gonna keep part of the, part of the available land there for a field for the students. Which is great and I'm glad they're doing that. Um. But yes, we had planned on putting another school there. And that was before all this housing occurred. So that's concerning. The reason it was pulled off, and that was right before I left the school board, was that we started to see some declining enrollment due to COVID. And that may even still be occurring, a slight decrease. Um, with the housing that we're doing with this housing element, uh, there's no doubt there's going to be a need for additional schools. Um, the, no doubt. And. I was very involved at the state level with the school boards association. I had lots of conversations with land use consultants related to schools. Everyone I talked to said, no, the school district should ever get rid of any land they own. Like, no question. And I actually questioned that and they said, and they kind of said, there will be a point where you will need it. Never let go of land you own. And I've been in this community about twenty-nine years and I believe there are. Four times where I've seen the school district either let go of land they owned or let go of an option. And in my opinion, and I think a lot of people in this community would agree with me, that it was a mistake. It, I I believe it definitely wasn't. As a school board member, I definitely thought it was a mistake when it happened during my tenure. So I am very hesitant to wanna keep this on the list and. Based on my experiences and I think we need to be able to address the school impact and we've had such a. Any, a large number of community members um speak out against this as well. So I would agree that I think we do need to take this off the list.
Okay, council member Narum?
Well, what I said earlier, I, this is one of those sites that uh joins existing uh single-family homes and things. And I tend to think it needs to stay on, in the EIR consistency of all these sites. I have trouble saying, well, I'm gonna take one off. Because it's uh in the neighborhood and yet I'm gonna leave another one uh on. I think, I think we need to be consistent through the EIR and see what we get. I, you know, I'm I'm a bit concerned. I mean, I, we have definitely heard from the neighbors loud and clear. They don't want. Uh, houses on there, but they didn't want the school built there either. So, uh, you know. There's trade-offs here and I'm not, and I'm not ready to say, yeah, this is absolute, we're gonna rezone it. I'd like to see. Again, this piece go through the EIR, but I think we owe it to the residents throughout the community to be consistent with these sites. That uh adjoin existing single-family homes and this is one of them. So I'm not able to support that motion.
Right, council member Bolch?
I was looking for another council member to go next. Um. I I think the community feedback is is strong. Uh. I remember when Valley Trails had the Ponderosa site that was uh potential for the school and then given up while the school's there. And I was on the planning commission when that occurred. So I understand exactly what council member Arkin mentions, but yet the school district board did put this forward and asked for us to evaluate it. And I think what they're trying to do is locate schools where they need them and this might not be where they need it because there's no arterial streets to it. And. So, you know, uh, the comment made by council member Norm about consistency of uh sites that touch. Uh, single-family housing, I think is actually extremely valid. I think if we're gonna be uh forthright with our community, we should do it. And approach it uniformly, uh, something I didn't think of initially, but. Um, what to do with this site, I am not sure. And in reality, I'm also not sure exactly what the school district's doing with relation to the. Field access or any of that, but but that's like, again, for the school district's process that I I have no familiarity with running a school. So. I probably will support keeping it on the list for the EIR to evaluate what to do with it. Uh, but I don't know what, where it will end up.
Right. Well, I also heard from all the residents loud and clear and uh, I also heard from the residents when it was going to be a six, seven, eight. School as proposed by the school district and uh, you know, clearly that was very unpopular and that was going to be significant amount of traffic. So twenty-eight homes that fit into that neighborhood that is similar to what happened at Valley Trails. It brought the entire neighborhood up in quality and value. Uh, I saw people cleaning up their yards and and uh. The neighborhood got a place structure and a pathway completion. So we're not talking about putting three and four-story buildings back here. We're talking about single-family homes that fit. This neighborhood. And um, again, going back to the survey, one of the really high responses is that people want to buy homes here. They don't wanna just rent in standard apartment. They wanna buy homes and they want it to be infill and this is infill. Walk to a school. How wonderful it would be to walk to a school. Right now, the school district is having to maintain and support that huge field. And I am not a school board trustee, but it, this school board trustees that we have right now in the city of Pleasanton voted. That they wanted the site considered for environmental studies and I'm gonna support that, their recommendation for including it. So we do need to vote on the motion, uh, unless anybody has any final comments. All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Testa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Aye.
Council member Bolch?
No.
Council member Narum?
No.
Mayor Brown?
No.
The motion fails three-two.
Okay, can we have a motion? Yes, council member Bolch.
I'll move staff's recommendation on density for purposes of the EIR at this time only.
I'll second it.
Can I comment? I, you know what, um, Mayor Brown, just a comment. Yeah, we have to move our cursors back and forth, at least on my computer, from the unmute to the raise hand and I can never get to it quick enough. If you could give us a little more time, um, maybe to respond. Um, I just, you know, it, more about the. More about the housing, the density. Um, yes, residents did not want the school either because of the traffic impact. But everyone I spoke to said they would rather live with the school there, a new s- a a new school there versus homes. So just to be clear on that. Um, but also more than, more than that, to me, the important piece of this. Is that, you know, we need, you know, we need to consider the school and yes, we're the city council. But, you know, we need to consider our community, what's best for our whole entire community and that includes our schools. And I really think we need this site preserved for a um, a future school or a future school expansion of Donlin. That could possibly, I. That would make an awfully big school, but even if we need that, because due to the amount of housing that we are being required to zone for. I think is a really important point. If we start using up all of this land, there will not be any place to put another school. So then what do we do? We are required by law to house students that move into our district. So that is my biggest concern is that we're not gonna have available land. Suitable land for a school site when we need it and we are going to need it. So that, that's really my main point I want to, um, I want to drive home here. So. Um, I I'm unfortunately not gonna be able to support the motion.
Okay, and to to that, I'd say you served for twelve years with distinction on the school board and I have the most respect for you. For all that you did and for all that you're aware of. And this is just an environmental study. We're not rezoning, but this school board. Said they want it. I don't know what their plans are, uh, if they're going to try to use the funds to buy. A school site in another area. I I don't know. Um, I think we're opening the door for discussions. And this is not a rezoning. This is not approval of a project and I hope the school absolutely. Through our PUSD joint meetings, for example, that you and I sit on as liaisons, they need to tell us what their plans are. And uh, before a project goes further, but I'm gonna support it for environmental studies. So, very, it's a very difficult, another very difficult decision to make. But um, the school board is asking for this, so I'm gonna support their request. So could we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Bolch?
Yes.
Council member Narum?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
No.
Council member Testa?
No.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
The motion passes three-two.
Okay, it's almost nine o'clock. We've been uh working on this since six. Shall we take a five-minute break and come back? Okay, seeing head nods, uh, we'll be right back. Thanks, stay tuned. It's tempting when you started meeting at six to go get dinner, right? Well, I don't have any dinner here at headquarters. All right. So staff was going to cluster some of these together and I said, break them up. So hopefully we can go pretty quick on some of the more easy sites. We'll see.
So did you, did you still want to go through the next few?
I'm hoping.
Or, or group any of them since these might be a bit less controversial or less, require less discussion.
Well, I had originally gone individually and I'm just really hoping that we can do that. Is it possible to do four, five and six and seven together?
Yeah. Move, move a little faster.
Yeah, four, five, six and seven, and then if somebody says no, break them apart, we can do that, but.
But I would even add eight, nine to that.
Eight, nine, all the way down to Valley Care?
Yeah, stop, not, not do that.
Give it a try. All right, TV thirty, let us know when you're ready.
Hi, this is TV thirty. Yeah, we're ready when you are. So if you guys want to get started, that, that works for us.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, great. So. All right, you'll be back in five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome back to the continuation of our special city council meeting here on February eighth. It is almost nine o'clock and we are hard at work looking for sites to study for the environmental impact report here at the city of Pleasanton. So staff, we had just talked about clustering some of the units together. If council does not have a problem, we would like to propose clustering site four, five, six, seven, eight. And nine, all for a single discussion. Do I see anybody that has a problem with that? Vice Mayor?
Yes, could I pull off six and nine? To discuss out of those, the rest I'm fine with.
Okay. Right? So Ellen, could we do sites four, five, seven and eight together?
Yes, so site four is the, we call it the Owen site. That includes the motel six and Tommy T's site, about two point three acres. Estimated capacity of about seventy one units. The planning commission's recommendation was to include this site, which is recommended for density at thirty to forty units to the acre. Site five is within Hacienda, that's the site currently occupied by the Labor's Council Building. About one point three acres, also recommended for density range of thirty to forty, yielding about forty one units. Planning Commission recommendation also to include. We're going to skip six, right? Seven is the Hacienda Terrace, and this would actually be just a portion of a larger property of about, of about two acres shown in orange here. Similar density to the others that are, I just mentioned at thirty to forty units to the acre, yielding approximately sixty units. And again, planning commission's recommendation to include. And then site eight is the Muslim Community Center property on West Los Pocitos. The proposal here is to, well, I think I have the wrong density range in there. That's actually a, recommended to be a fifteen to twenty five units, the acre site. Across five acres yielding a total of seventy five units, I'm sorry, it's a typo in the slide. So that's those four and happy to take any questions before discussion.
Great, Vice Mayor Arkin?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just didn't lower my hand from last time. I have no questions on these.
Councilmember Narum?
Thank you, Ellen, can you go back to the Muslim Community Center? On the housing worksheet, the capacity was listed at a hundred, if I'm reading this right. And I think you had sixty on your.
Yes, I miss, I mistyped the slide. So that, so the, just to clarify, the capacity for the MCC property is fifteen, range is fifteen to twenty five to the acre. With a assumed capacity of, sorry, of a hundred units.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
I'm just fixing it right now. So I can bring it back up.
We do staff recommendation, we want to make sure it's the right recommendation. All right, councilmember Testa?
Just a quick question, how many of these sites would be eligible to be? A speed thirty five site?
All of them.
Thank you. That's it.
I'm looking for a motion or?
I'll move approval of on sites four, five, seven and eight with the staff recommendation on the density and ranges.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in second, any other comments? All right, seeing none, could we please have a roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Testa?
Aye.
Councilmember Balch?
Aye.
Councilmember Narum?
Aye.
Mayor Brown?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously?
Love it. All right, number, site six, the Signature Center.
A second here. My screen. So slide, site six is the Signature Center property, recommended for density of between thirty and forty units to the acre. The total development area is about eleven acres with a capacity of three hundred and thirty units. The planning commission's recommendation was to include. I did want to make a note on this site that the proposal is to redevelop. Essentially the portion of the site that, that has the existing struck parking structure on it. So it would retain the two existing office towers that exist on the site and fit some additional housing adjacent to them. So the development area is relatively small. To yield that, that number of units. So difficult to increase the density without pushing the building up without occupying more of the site.
Any questions? There we go, Vice Mayor Arkin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The reason I pulled this one off. I, I think it's a good, I think it's a good site. It is fairly close to freeways, it's close to retail, it's. On a major street there, I think. You know, honestly, I think we could go up a little in density on this one. To try to get to our numbers and that's what I would be interested in seeing. I think we have it at, what is it, thirty to forty? I would say thirty five to forty five to go up just a little bit. I think it's a good site for that.
Right, councilmember Balch?
Didn't I just hear staff say that the, the density was what the site could handle? Well, that's a question.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we have, you know, we have discretion as a council to. And I think that's why we're, we're meeting here and trying to figure out what, you know, what works. And we have such a large number to get to and.
I, I know.
Get out other sites, can I finish? I just, we, you know, if, if there's a possibility, we have a lot to go through of having other sites taken off. You know, maybe increase a little on sites that make more sense, one like this that it, that it's not really super close to a neighborhood. Not as good as some other sites, but I, I just think maybe if we went up a little bit, it might be worth doing. So that's, that's my, you know, I, I think there's a problem with, with all of this frankly, because it's a lot of housing. But. You know, it's, it's, it's a suggestion of mine to go up a little on it.
Staff, if we go up a little on everything, is there a chance that H C D would reject the sites because the density is unachievable?
I, I think we need to be realistic about the capacity of the site. In this case, we know that there's a constrained footprint unless you demolish the existing buildings. So to fit that new residential in. You end up driving up the height of the building pretty quickly. The proposal from the, from the property owner is actually a little bit less density than even this three hundred and thirty units. Because of some of the constraints around height. So staff would have a little bit of concern about. Particularly increasing the bottom end of the range, right? Because that becomes a minimum density and you might have an unintended consequence of a, a taller building in this location than, than might really fit with what's around it.
Okay, I'll move staff's recommendation.
I see, I see, you have your hand up, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just had, this is more of a process question, I mean, Ms. Clark can clarify for me. So as we're going, we're going in order from the lowest number to the top on all these sites. If we get to the end and there are sites we take off. But we're keeping a lot of them at staff recommendation. We may not get to our number, so from a process standpoint, what are we going to do then? Do we have to go revisit some of these that we've already voted on? If we don't get to enough of a number, enough of a buffer that staff's comfortable with? So I'm just asking from a process standpoint of how we do this.
So as we go through, one of the things that Jennifer is doing behind the scenes is, is keep, keeping a tally of, of where we're at relative to the Rena. Gap and to the buffer. So as we get to the end of the decisions being made by the city council, we'll report back on, on how, how we've done. And if, you know, we can even do that at an interim point, if it seems like a decision would sort of offset our ability to reach the number. And then the city council could certainly circle back and, you know, revisit a site that may have taken off the list. To see if you would like to put it back on again. If we have time to do that tonight, so that, that would be how it would work from a process standpoint. We always have the option to go back and say, hey, we, now we see everything right, we need to, no, we need to go back and adjust. Elsewhere in the list possibly, so hopefully we won't get there, but Jennifer's keeping a tally of how we're doing relative to our numbers.
Okay, I'm just, I'm kind of concerned, like, this is kind of a priority list then. Because the sites that are earlier on are getting more priority than the sites that are at the end. And that we have less options as we get to the end, so that was the whole reason I was asking. But if we can revisit any decision we made, because we're not getting to the number, I think that's what you explained, then. Then I'm, I'm comfortable with that and I thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, we, we need to move forward with an inventory that meets, that meets the capacity that we need to meet. So if we get to a point where we don't have enough sites, we would say, hey, maybe we just go back and look at some, some of those decisions or revisit them.
Sounds good. Okay.
I'm willing to second to councilmember Balch's motion, I don't think he had a second.
Okay, good. Thanks for the procedural. I'm just a little concerned since we're in discussion mode. That this development is nowhere near a park. It's nowhere, it's high density, it's in a parking lot. So I'm going to ask Jennifer Hagan or, or Director Clark. This, I'm just challenged with this site because it's not near a bart station. It's, it's four stories probably, and it's in a parking lot. How can we make this feel like Pleasanton?
That's really going to be a site planning exercise for, for this developer. You know, they did look at some different options, including one that Mike Tassana really didn't like, which was closing Clorox Way to charge for traffic. Which would let them create some more real estate and potentially sort of more of an open space area. But integrating open spaces into this project, I think is a basic expectation of all of our higher density projects. So that would be part of the P U D and the project would be a process to, to weave those in. But it, it could be challenging on a site like this where you have a lot of surface parking and plus residential.
So Mike, is Clorox Way really that busy? I, I wait forever for the light just because it's, it's so rare.
No, but Owens is really busy and if you close Clorox, they all have to go to Owens. Excuse me.
And oh, and Clorox is two lanes, so it's not very wide. Okay, so it would have to be part of the design project, somebody brought something forward. And they said, I want to build this, we're going to be looking for some open space and place on the site where kids can play and touch grass, right? That's what I hear. Okay, all right, we have a motion made and seconded. Councilmember Testa, we haven't heard from you, did you have a comment?
I was also going to just point out that I knew that there had been, when we were looking at this site with. With the applicant developer, I don't think it was. Closing Clorox really made it look lovely, it gave it a park-like feel between the properties and. And Mike winced when I said that, but. It really made it lovely and, and gosh, nobody uses Clorox, I couldn't imagine that. Because there, it's not only Owens, but there's also going out onto. Stone Ridge isn't, wouldn't that be still a, a good traffic flow?
My meeting with the developer, I asked them to run some traffic studies. And so they're actually doing that, right? Because it does look pretty, right, I'm all for, I'm all for pretty. But if you have two hundred vehicles that you have to put onto Owens and then you put on housing. On top of there and then they have to go somewhere and you probably can't hardly fit two hundred more vehicles on Owens. Then it's going to be an issue, so I'm, I told them, go ahead and look at it and give me the, give me the traffic study. I just am pretty skeptical and I told them they have a lot of convincing to do because Owens is full. So that's, that's where we're at, but I'm not. Dead set against it is just not really reasonable in, in my opinion, but they can look at it and show me what they see.
You know, all of this kind of sucks actually, but, and you know what, to me, it's not that it's pretty. To me, when I saw green grass, I saw a place for the children to play. I saw families, I saw us taking, you know, what I think are. Not optimal living environments and creating something that made it feel more community. So your job here is absolutely as miserable as ours is trying to figure out. How we're going to squeeze all of this housing in and where our community, there's going to be an awful lot of loss along the way. So if we can give our children a place to play, to me, there's a benefit there, okay, so.
We cannot approve a new development plan unless it's got the things that we need within the city. So otherwise we just, we rescind the support. Okay, so we have a motion made in second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Balch?
Aye.
Councilmember Narum?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Testa?
Aye.
Mayor Brown?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously?
All right, we're moving along to site nine, if you're following along at home, that's Metro five eighty.
Okay, the Metro five eighty, uh, property, um, is one of this, the, the sites, uh, proposed to be zoned for, uh, the higher density range of forty-five to seventy-five units to the acre. Uh, the project would potentially occupy about five acres of the existing site, uh, including a portion of existing parking, uh, and one of their, uh, existing retail buildings. Um, that yields a total of about two hundred and twenty-five units, uh, and the planning commission's recommendation was to include this site.
Okay, anybody have questions, comments? I know, uh, council member Arkin, you pulled this item for discussion, yes?
Um, yeah, you know, I had, I had pulled it because I thought this perhaps could be another site. We could go up a little on density, um, for reasons that I've already mentioned before. I mean, this is kind of, it's not near existing, existing neighborhood, it's near freeway, that sort of thing. There's, seems to be good traffic circulation there, if I would, I would guess anyhow. But you know what, I'm, with the process that Ms. Clark explained to us that we could go back on anything, um, I'm going to go ahead and, and I'm going to pass on that. And I would, um, support, um, staff's recommendation on it. So I'll just go ahead and move, um, to approve staff's recommendation on Metro five eighty, um, site number nine.
Okay, the motion, here we have a second.
Well, seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded. I see you had nods, so considering we've got lots to go through, a roll call vote, please, for, uh, for, uh, site nine.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Narum.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolch.
Aye.
Councilmember Testa.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Right, site number ten, if you want to give us an update on that one.
Yep, uh, site ten is the, uh, portion of the Valley Care, uh, property. Um, staff had recommended that as a high-density housing site at thirty, uh, to forty to the acre with a capacity of a hundred and eight units. Um, after this was brought forward, we heard from Representative Valley Care that they were not interested in this site moving forward as a housing site. So the recommendation is to not include this one in the inventory.
Okay, wow, that makes it quick, number eleven, eleven.
Uh, does, is there support for that, uh, for that change?
Oh, okay, yes, councilmember Bolch, I guess we need to remove it, okay.
All right, yeah, if I can ask a quick question as well, maybe, Mayor. Um, staff, if, if, if I may, this kind of goes back to my net, uh, loss slash, uh, site inclusion question, right? So as we are looking only at the EIR conclusion now, not for the sites to go in the ultimate housing element plan. I believe, is it practical to think that some sites may choose to fall off? And what is the implication? Could we still advance a site? Cause I was under the impression with the number of housing units, and, and I'm, I know we're talking about the, uh, I should be clear, I'm, I don't support putting this one on the list. But I want to ask in, in general, the process, right? So, so because we had Rena more than five thousand, my understanding was we didn't need to necessarily achieve owner compliance or desire for the zoning. However, is it a higher bar to, to walk or, or to, to meet if an owner says they would like to be excluded? Could you elaborate?
Yeah, I, I think there's a difference between an owner needing to, to get affirm, needing to get affirmation from an owner versus an owner saying literally, I do not want to be a housing site and I have no intention of developing housing here because we need this property for hospital expansion purposes. Um, that's a difficult narrative to overcome with, with HCD. So, um, you know, in that instance, staff would recommend that we, we take it off the list. Um, and, you know, we would have to think about other similar requests if we really got a strong, don't include my site. I don't, I don't want to be considered, um, that hasn't happened, uh, for, uh, any other sites that we have on the list is a hard no on inclusion. So that could change, of course, but, um, was certainly the case here.
Okay, well, I'll move staff's revised recommendation to remove it from the list from EIR consideration.
I'll second. Okay, it looks good. Uh, can we have a roll call vote to remove site ten?
Councilmember Bolch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Narum.
Aye.
Councilmember Testa.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Valley Care, you're not on our list anymore. Site eleven, please.
Yep, uh, site eleven is actually an area more than a specific site. It includes, um, various properties along Old Santa Rita Road, uh, totaling of a little, little over twenty acres on aggregate. Um, the recommended density range is for a high-density, um, range at thirty to sixty to the acre yielding, uh, six hundred and fifty-five units. Uh, again, using the low end of the range as a high-density site, uh, the planning commission's recommendation was to include this site in the inventory.
So any comments, questions? Yes, uh, Vice Mayor Arkin?
Yes, on this one, I thought perhaps we could also go up slightly on density. Um, can I get any staff comment on that?
Um, no, this is one where, uh, you know, higher density might be appropriate. There's not a lot of sensitive uses around here in terms of, uh, neighboring residential. There's a little bit down in this, uh, corner here, some apartments, um, and that's really the closest. Um, the, the challenge with this site is the fact that it's really a, a mixed mixture of sites at various levels of utilization. We have some really underutilized, I mean, literally wrecking yards and, I don't know, construction storage. Um, all the way up to, you know, some that have buildings and, and various other things on them. So, um, you know, this is one where making the case to HCD might be a little bit challenging and possibly suggesting a very high density might make it a bit of a harder sell. Would be my prognosis on that one. But in terms of, in terms of suitability for, for higher density, yes, it's a good location.
Okay, because you have it at thirty to sixty, so if it were thirty-five to sixty-five, would that be something unreasonable in your opinion?
Um, that's probably doable, it's just a notch, a notch up.
Councilmember Bolch.
Yeah, I'm gonna, um, writing that down. So I'm just going to maybe lob a comment of consideration. I appreciate everyone working through the.
I know they've been difficult. I have a slight challenge with what do we do with the businesses here? And, and what I mean by that is, a lot of the public comment that came in was particularly about retail sites, uh, south of here on Santa Rita Road. And, uh, as someone that works in the industrial commercial areas, I'm specifically worried about businesses in those, in those realms. And where will they locate in our community? You know, auto repairs, glass repairs, HVAC repairmen, people that are not necessarily your local hardware store. And so, uh, we have those types of uses, right? Who, where's the contractor that's, that's remodeling your house located? And so, uh, at six hundred and sixty, excuse me, six hundred and fifty-five is staff recommendation. Um, I, I just worry that we're not factoring in these types of other uses. The community cannot go to restaurants and housing alone. Um, so, uh, I have a challenge with that, part one. And then part two I'll mention is that, uh, based on a quick look at staff recommendation on the Santa Rita Road corridor, which I believe is one of our busiest corridors in our community with number of daily trips at five o'clock. Uh, we've got, and, and I know we're just starting the corridor, but, you know, approximately, I think, fourteen hundred twenty assumed capacity units. And I'm adding up just, you know, Old Santa Rita, Pimlico, Pimlico, uh, Pimlico North-South. And I'm kind of going just down the, the swath, right? So I just, um, I mentioned it for comment, maybe people have solutions better than what I'm trying to think about. But where are we locating these businesses? Where are these, where are these businesses that we actually need to support our community and our economy? Where are they going? Thank you.
Councilmember Narum.
Thank you, um, I had much the same question, you know, as an example, uh, one of the sites on the street is the, it's a lot for the new car dealers to store their cars. You know, are we going to wipe that out and then, um, does that mean the dealers go away? I, you know, I, I just, I have a little bit of discomfort. The other piece of this, that if you rezone all this and somebody puts a, you know, high-density apartment building in the middle of it, the next thing we're going to hear is complaints, um, uh, from the, the auto repair shop next door, starting at seven AM. I, I, I just, I kind of wonder if there's not a better way to go about this street, you know, or maybe we just take part of it. Um, maybe the, you know, I, I, I don't know, but I just, I, I have some discomfort. These are not glamorous businesses, but they're businesses we need, they're not businesses you do over the internet. And, um, I just, you know, a, a, a word of caution, I guess, uh, about this for me.
Hmm, I think the area is due for a improvement. It's tired, they're old, they have not been reinvested in the buildings. And we do have business parks and we do have even areas, uh, which we talk about occasionally on the east side. That would be great, they're industrial uses, they shouldn't necessarily be right down the street from a bart station, shopping, an easy access freeway, which this council agreed, if you're within a short distance to the freeway, make sure it's, um, included. Site eleven, um, I'll have to look up the points, uh, how many points it received. But it, it hits a lot of the buttons that we'd asked for, for, um, good site location. And, um, we've got it right here, let's see. Site eleven. Site eleven had twenty points, it's one of our higher scoring areas. So I can absolutely support staff recommendation. Perhaps the, the businesses that are there will need to find a better location, but just car storage. Um, their cars, they can be stored a little bit further away. I'm not sure if I can support that idea. Uh, councilmember Testa, you haven't weighed in yet.
Um, my thoughts are just that I, I think what the state is pushing on us is exactly, you know, to, to not give us the options of having, um, a balanced, well-rounded community with all of the different, um, needs and services and and I think that's what this whole process is all about. It's all about, the state is just telling us, housing, 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 and they don't care that it throws our community out of balance and our schools will be overcrowded and we will be eliminating, um, places in the community for various services. The state is telling us that we don't have a choice in this process. So I think this is as good a location as any to identify the housing.
Okay, uh, we need a motion. I know Vice Mayor talked to you about a change. I would ask that you consider staff recommendation, uh, it's just not near parks, it's, it's really a very, um, it's not the most beautiful part of town, at least at this point.
Okay, I will make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation on Old Santa Rita area, site number eleven.
Yeah. I'll second that motion, uh, and we have a comment, uh, councilmember Bolch.
So I'm just going to mention, I'll support it to go to EIR. I mean, I, I understand exactly what you all are, uh, saying and, and I, I, I realize that. But I still would like to lobby or, or just bring to that concern, uh, the balance of our community relies on a lot of different tradespeople that are not, uh, you know, particularly in office. Office, we've seen the challenges of COVID, but industrial slash commercial is, uh, highly sought after in our community. So, uh, it would mean a major change to this area of our community. And with all the sites being selected or proposed, I am worried about that. So for EIR, I'm here, but for, for future, I just have to think further. Thank you.
Okay, um, seeing no other hands up, could we take a roll call vote on site eleven?
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Aye.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Bolch.
Aye.
Councilmember Narum.
Aye.
Councilmember Testa.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, site twelve. Ellen, you're on mute.
It's getting late, um, sorry about that. So Pimlico North, uh, just north of Pimlico Drive, recommended for density of thirty to sixty units to the acre, a high-density site on about two acres yielding, uh, about sixty-four units. Uh, it was the planning commission's recommendation to include this site.
Right, I don't see any hands up, um, if you can agree, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move that.
Motion for a staff recommendation.
Okay, I think she's. Councilmember Testa made a motion and could we have a second from Vice Mayor?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any topic or discussion? Seeing none, let's take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Testa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolch.
Aye.
Councilmember Narum.
Aye.
Mayor Brown.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, site thirteen.
Hey, site thirteen is just opposite, uh, on the south side of Pimlico Drive, again, a relatively small site at about two acres. Um, because of the residential adjacency, staff was recommending a, a lower density here at fifteen to twenty-five to the acre, uh, that yields about forty units. Um, after some discussion, the planning commission's recommendation was to exclude this site. Um, just because really the yield is not significant, um, and the neighborhood proximity just sort of made this one a more of a marginal, a marginal choice.
Any motions or comments or questions to support planning commission or to include it? Yes, councilmember Bolch.
I'm just going to echo the prior comment about the sites that back up to single family. I think as a consistency in our community, we really need to think about either all-in or all-out. Um, so in historical, uh, site twenty-six is in and, uh, the Donland site is in for EIR purposes. Doesn't mean that we ultimately move to that, so I suggest we keep it in.
Keep it in, okay. Councilmember Narum?
Well, he stole my, my line, I think for consistency, um, this is one we need to leave in for the EIR. And, uh, this, this area is one that I think, uh, the EIR may identify some impacts that would indicate taking out. But in the spirit of consistency for, uh, these sites across the community, I, I strongly think this needs to be left in through the EIR. So that's, that's where I am.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, I don't agree with the consistency issue. Um, that's why we're going through all of these and I think we have the discretion to remove or keep. And as long as we get to a reasonable buffer going through the I, EIR process, I think, you know, we're doing what we're supposed to do. And there's lots of different factors and reasons why we may want to keep one on or take one off. So I, I don't particularly agree with the consistency issue. Um, as it relates to the Pimlico area, south side, um, the planning commission did recommend correctly, I believe, that, uh, removing this one. And I think this area, um, somewhat similar to some other areas. This is a big retail hub, um, that is an amenity to an, uh, an existing neighborhood right next to it. Um, so I actually would support staff's recommendation, planning commission's recommendation on removing this site from the list.
All right, councilmember Testa?
Um, I'll just ask, is, uh, this a potential? Um I'll just ask, is uh this a potential S thirty-five site?
I think she said they all were.
That was a yes, okay. What are we doing to our community? Okay.
So I I I um. I know this is a very well-used shopping area. And having that neighborhood, that walkability, that community area, um I know many people that shop there that I I. I've gone there for different things in the past and I would not want to wipe out that entire region for retail. On both sides of Pimlico, so I absolutely would support keeping it in. Taking south side out, but leaving north side in, which is the planning commission's recommendation. Council member Bolch?
So we're willing to leave retail in, but commercial and industrial uses are not. That's what I'm hearing.
I think it's a site by site, but when you actually refer to, let's be consistent, I'm looking at Saint. Um I'm looking at some of the sites like Donland, very low density, and this one is being recommended. At fifteen to twenty-five units to the acre. To me, that's really different to back to. A residential, single-family R sixty-five hundred or one sixty-five hundred zoning. And then put a three-story building behind it. To me, that's really different than adding twenty-eight units to the potentially. But studying the idea of twenty-eight units at the back.
Why don't we consider mixed use? Why don't we consider mixed use with lower density on the housing and mixed use on the front, so we maintain some retail and have some housing?
Well, that's always a potential. Somebody could bring a project forward. We're not eliminating that. So do we have a a motion? Are you, sorry, I didn't want to cut you off. You have your hand up.
Oh, sorry. So I'm done.
Uh Vice Mayor, did you make a motion to remove site thirteen or are you going to?
I'll go ahead and I'll go ahead and make a motion that we um. Um accept staff's recommendation and planning commission recommendation to remove site number thirteen, Pimlico area south side.
It's planning commission. Okay, great, right. I'll second that. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
I.
Mayor Brown?
I.
Council member Bolch?
No.
Council member Narum?
No.
Council member Testa?
I.
The motion passes through, too.
And Saint Elizabeth Seaton, site fourteen.
Take myself off me. Um site fourteen is a portion of this, the property owned by Saint Elizabeth Seaton or the Catholic Archdiocese. Uh currently vacant, uh recommended for a medium-density range fifteen to twenty-five to the acre. Uh yielding fifty-seven units across two-point-eight-five acres uh site. Uh planning commission's recommendation was to include the site. Uh we've also received um. A notification of interest from the Archdiocese, including this property as well.
Questions, comments, or a motion? Council member Bolch?
Right up to single-family housing on the other side, but with density that is fifteen to twenty-five per acre. It's a little different than the Donland site. Which is five units an acre. So I I think we should be consistent.
In in that, sorry, staff, in that area, aren't there quite a few duplexes and duets on Ream and in that area?
So the aerial image, um so you can see some some, you know, uh these are more higher-density housing units to the north. Um and then these are, I would call them small lots, single-family uh behind here rather than the larger lots. My Jennifer may know what the zoning is in that in that area.
Yeah, it's it's a PUD. I don't know the exact density off the top of my head, but it's similar to um. You know, something probably of a density of of Erby that's probably closer to, you know, nine or ten. Eleven dwelling minutes breaker, I would guess at least.
Similar to staff's recommendation, but may at least maybe slightly more dense, okay. All right, um. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Um I'm not opposed to this site. I do think I would echo what council member Bolch had said about the density on it. It doesn't seem to really fit in with the area. It does seem to be a higher density than what's surrounding it. There is a park right nearby, so that's good. Um. It's right off of Stone Ridge, so Stone Ridge is a is a main street, so traffic impact, well, there's going to be traffic impact. There's going to be school impact. So and you know, I guess we could say that for every one of them, so it certainly would with that type of density, but it seems to be a little high fitting in with that area. That that's my only concern with it. Um I don't know if anybody is interested in reducing it a little bit. Um but I I do have that concern.
Council member Narum?
Um I'm supportive of this site. I do agree with the Vice Mayor, you know. Maybe we do something on the order of um. I don't know, twelve to eighteen and or ten to fifteen, somewhere in there to be more consistent with that neighborhood. That is immediately adjacent and surrounding it on the south side.
Ten to fifteen would yield in that um. Ten, twenty-eight to forty-three units?
Six units, I think.
Yeah, for for a moderate, for a um soon capacity, okay, all right. Um Vice Mayor, did you have other comments? Okay, all right. Council member Testa? Sound okay? We don't have a motion on the floor. I'm just.
I I would, I I would be agreeable to the reduction in density to have it blend in more as well.
Okay, could I have a motion then?
I'll move that we uh add Saint Elizabeth Seaton to the uh list for the EIR, but reduce the density from. Twelve to, what did I say, twelve to eighteen units? Twelve to fifteen, twelve to eighteen units?
Twelve to eighteen, sounds good. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Right, motion made and seconded. Can roll call vote, please?
Council member Narum?
Uh I.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
I.
Council member Bolch?
I.
Council member Testa?
I.
Mayor Brown?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Fifteen. Ellen?
Rats, sorry. I'll start again. Um this is similarly a collection of individual properties or parcels. Um in this instance, located on the uh southeast side of Ream Drive, currently sort of a light industrial. Service commercial-type uh buildings. Um proposed at a at a density of eight to fourteen to the acre, which is similar to uh the neighborhood just to the. Uh east of there. Um and that yields a total of a hundred and eight units. And so the planning commission's recommendation was to include this site.
Council member Narum?
You know, I have the same challenge with this site as with Old Santa Rita in that. You know, there's a lot of businesses, small businesses tucked into those various uh industrial buildings. And where do they go? And you can say, well, there are other parts, but I think if you look at the other industrial areas of the community, they're full. There's not a lot of uh empty spaces for lease or buildings for sale. But I think that said, I, because it is the EIR, I probably would go ahead and support putting this through the EIR. And see where we end up. And I also appreciate that the density on this one, I think, is consistent with what's directly across the street. To the east from those uh from the industrial buildings, so. Um and I'll put that in a motion if you'd like.
Thank you, I do like. And we have a second? Can we have a second? Okay, second by the Vice Mayor Arkin. All right, roll call vote, please.
Council member Narum?
I.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
I.
Council member Bolch?
I.
Council member Testa?
I.
Mayor Brown?
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, we're we're working along and these are absolutely, as everyone has said, such difficult decisions because we understand the impacts of these. Potential development projects and uh it's very frustrating for us all. Okay, Ellen, it's yours.
So site sixteen is the Tri Valley Inn, currently Tri Valley Inn on Santa Rita Road. Um it's about a two-and-a-half acre parcel. Uh staff is recommending this one for a density range of fifteen to twenty-five units to the acre. So a medium-density site yielding uh an estimated capacity of about fifty units. Um and the planning commission's recommendation was to include this site.
Any questions or comments from staff? I have one. There's a restaurant in the front. So it's more than just a tri valley inn. There's there's like a dining establishment in the very front, in front of the swimming pool. That's included on the site as well. Is that correct?
That's that's part of the hotel complex is that is that restaurant that sits in front on uh on Santa Rita.
Okay, and when we look at the number of units, uh do you have any idea how many um? Units that are for rent? I mean, just to get an idea, uh a capacity, I know the people um. On Shearwater Court expressed concerns about, they certainly wouldn't want a four-story towering building. Uh looking over the fence for them. But um what all we're really looking at here at the density, sorry, you took your map away, but at the density you're proposing, which is. About thirty-seven but as high as sixty units.
Yeah, that's that's a townhouse-type density or garden apartments, as Brian suggested, at the higher end of the range. Um but the expectation is that those would generally be uh two-to-three-story buildings, not not four stories.
Yeah, we wouldn't want three stories. Okay, Vice Mayor Arkin?
Yes, thank you. Um I, again, just questioning the density on this one with the neighborhood behind it, since we have heard. Some feedback from neighbors, so does that really, I mean, is that? In your opinion, Ms. Clark, is that going to be a reasonable density estimate, what considering? The neighborhood and will it really be compatible?
Um I I think if there's, if that's a concern of the of the council, um you know, reducing the densities slightly on this site. Would potentially allow some more space for buffering of those units um and potentially a smaller-scale project. So that's really a decision that you need to uh could could think about and could make.
Okay. Council member Narum?
Thank you. Um you know, the houses that back up to that are are, most of them are single-story. And so. I am not comfortable at fifteen to twenty-five when we acknowledge that there will be some three-story units in there to make the density. So um again, on my theme, that I I do think we need to be consistent on these sites and put them all in. But I think the density on this needs to be reduced to some level that ensures it's no more than two stories. And I, you know, I would look to staff what that number is, but I I, three stories is too much here, so.
I'd look. See, lots of head nods.
Yeah, I'd look to staff for what that range, what they think would be an acceptable range that would keep this at two stories or less on this site.
Yeah, yeah, the height of the buildings isn't part of function of how large the units are, so you know, generally for townhouse product, you're going to have. A garage, little bit of living space, and then most of the living space then in the second story, so. Usually to bump up unit size, developers will be interested in building out, you know, that third story as well. So it might, it might change the project a little bit. You might end up a little bit more surface parking in the project for that reason. If you if you want it to be a two-story building. And I wanted to add for all of these sites that that there will be um designs. Design standards that we will be developing. And that's the opportunity to set some of the parameters around things like height limits, maybe not necessarily stories, but but height limits. If you wanted to uh control sort of, you know, just overshadowing and that sort of thing um for a particular. Um a particular location.
So Ellen, I I guess I have a little bit of concern. I mean, we we, you know, had. Hours of discussion in the downtown specific plan about, as a result of the three-story houses there that was next to um. Little salt craft building. And out of that, we ended up, I think, with a policy of. Uh no more than a one-story differential. Downtown and I I just, I don't see why that sort of thing wouldn't apply here. Um these are existing homes. They've been there forever and um I I just. I would be very uncomfortable with the three stories and and even having the door cracked open that it, you know, a developer could come in and. Push for that third floor on the townhouse at the fifteen to twenty-five to an acre. I. I I just. I I have a struggle with that.
Yeah, I mean, if for the downtown plan, uh staff did, you know, we recommended going to a height, a height limit versus a story limit, but I understand the. The rationale of wanting to keep that differential lower and again, it it would be for the council to decide if you wanted to. Set a more restrictive limit in terms of whether it's stories or or total height of the building.
And where would, when would we do that or what phase of this would we do that?
Um so the the proposal is, and we're we're working on this sort of in in the background, is working with our consultants on developing objective design standards. We've been waiting to see uh which sites ended up on the list before really forging ahead with that, because obviously we want to tailor. The design standards to the sites that we have. Um so our expectation is we would come back um in the late summer fall. With a more refined set of design standards for all of the housing sites with the goal of attempting to adopt those. You know, concurrently or very shortly after the the sites or the housing elements adopted.
Okay.
Because in the past, uh council member Narum, uh I know we had a project, I guess it was Andres', where we had parking in the back. So it was a buffer. And then we capped it at two stories, so that put a distance and that put a cap at two stories. And maybe that's difficult to do with zoning, but absolutely, we need to respect those neighbors and their concerns for privacy. So, yeah, council member Testa?
So there are several other um apartment complexes, multi-units along there. What is the density on those?
You know, I don't know offhand. Jennifer, do you do you know the typical densities there? Maybe she can look those up and we can circle back on it.
Looking at them, I I I think they're twenty to twenty-five units per acre.
So about the same as this one is.
Yeah, there's a mix. So you can see down here, these are more clustered apartment-style homes. Um and then it transitions to more traditional, single-family, kind of wrapping the site here on Shearwater and Tanner Court.
My my response was actually about the larger complexes further down Santa Rita. I was.
That's what I was asking, the ones on Santa Rita, yeah.
Yeah, probably about twenty.
Okay, and do they range between two and three stories? It seems to me one of them had the parking underneath and so. Two stories on top. And then there was, there's one that is just a straight two-story, something like that.
Um that sounds right. I can't remember exactly.
Okay, well, I agree also that we want to um be sensitive to the homes behind. But I think it's an appropriate site since along Santa Rita, there are already the. Multi-unit complexes and and it's a busy thoroughfare, so.
I do think that we can accomplish quite a bit with the standards that we will be adopting. And um paying particular attention uh attention to these smaller sites that have residential adjacency. And so you can put a number in there and if, when when you see those standards and how it would work out. Um you may be uh okay with the density. Um as proposed, and if not, you could knock it down. I will tell you that the last time we went through, we had a handful. I will tell you that the last time we went through, we had a handful of the sites where we had very site-specific restrictions because of what was next door. We said for the first hundred feet, and I think the mayor referred to this on one of them, for the first hundred feet, line, we could only, you couldn't exceed two stories. And it was all about shadows and sunlight and things like that, and we applied it just to that site. I'm not sure HED is going to let us do that this time, but if we tailor the design standards correctly, we can make sure that it works for this site in particular.
We, we can certainly tailor the standards to, as Brian was saying, to particular site conditions. So you could sort of have a condition that has a single-family residential adjacency or, you know, one to two-story buildings and require some sort of a transition or, or buffer to be incorporated into those sort of surrounding and adjacent property boundaries.
Okay, thank you.
All right, could I have a, I haven't heard from Councilmember Bolch, but I'm looking for a motion for this, moving it forward, if you want to keep it on. And if you do, what would be the density?
Well, I'll, I'll move to include it in the EIR. I'm, and I'm really uncomfortable about ending up with three stories on there, but, you know, I guess Ellen and Brian, if you think you can do it, and you've heard us, then, you know, put it in at the recommended, staff recommended density and, and see where, what happens with it and where it falls out in the EIR. Don't all jump on that once.
Okay, I'll second. Um, I'll, I'll second that and, um, I agree with Councilmember Narum that, um, I'll, I'll go with it for the EIR process, but I have the same concerns you mentioned about that density and additional stories that are not going to be compatible and have, be a big impact to the neighborhood there. So I think that's something we have to look at going forward and be very sensitive to that. But I'll, I'll second your motion and agree to support staff recommendations through the EIR process.
I know, I'll say, speak that I will not support a three-story building in that location, I just won't. And I see lots of heads nodding. So if, if a project comes forward, it's going to downsize it to two stories or they're going to put less units there. That's just the way it is, we're just not going to do that to the neighbors, it's not right. I don't see any more hands up, so we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Narum?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Hi.
Councilmember Bolch?
Hi.
Councilmember Testa?
Hi.
Mayor Brown?
Hi.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great, item seventeen, site seventeen.
All right, I'm, I'm getting into my rhythm here, I'm learning to take myself off mute before I tend to share my screen, because then there's too many. All right, site seventeen is Mission Plaza, recommended. Density range is thirty to forty units to the acre, that's a higher density site across two-point-two acres. That yields a density of the low end of the range, sixty-seven units. After much discussion and neighbor inputs, the planning commission recommendation wants to exclude this site from the inventory.
Going to these, to the owner also asked to be removed?
Some comments were provided at the last meeting that suggested that the, there was a willingness, I think, if, if, given the choice between Mission Plaza and then the next site we'll talk about, Valley Plaza, that they were willing to take this one, withdraw this one from consideration as a, as a housing site.
Great, okay, good, that's what I was thinking too. Okay, Councilmember Narum?
So, thank you, that was my question. I thought we actually received a letter saying that they wanted the Mission Plaza off and then the Valley Plaza rezoned at a mixed use.
I believe that's true.
So, I mean, I, I would support removing Mission Plaza from the list.
Sounds like a motion.
You got it.
Okay, I'll second that motion, we're going to remove Mission Plaza from the environmental studies. I don't see anybody else with their hand up. Could we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Narum?
Hi.
Mayor Brown?
Hi.
Councilmember Bolch?
Hi.
Councilmember Testa?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
And we're on to Valley Plaza, that is site eighteen.
Uh, so site eighteen, Valley Plaza, again, recommended as a higher density site at thirty to forty to the acres. This is quite a bit larger than the adjacent Mission Plaza with seven-point-three-three acres total. That yields an estimated capacity of two-hundred-and-twenty units. For similar reasons as were articulated for Mission Plaza, the planning commission recommended that this site be excluded from the list. Concerns about local serving retail were the primary reasons for that.
Did you get a letter or information that the, some of the large businesses in the complex were okay with this site being rezoned, such as the Sunshine Saloon? And Tree Value Hardware?
That the majority of the owners, there are several property owners within the Valley Plaza, that the, the majority of them are interested in having the site rezoned, including the owner of the Sunshine Saloon and the majority property owner for the, for the center that owns, you know, most of the, most of the land.
Okay, good, thank you, it's just nice for everyone to know. Councilmember Bolch?
Yeah, so I, I received the letter as well, or maybe a copy of it going to staff. You know, so this is, this is kind of the same issue I'm having with the commercial and the industrial, right? We have to make choices for what the community needs for a holistic community and the businesses they support. So I watched the planning commission and I understand why they moved the way they did. I personally, though, believe we should look at, at least for the EIR, a potential mixed use of some type on this site so that it could be redeveloped, especially because they are talking to the owners and they, they are talking to the businesses there, and I think they want to make it a success. I don't support the entire site being forty units an acre, though, so I, I'm not here with this, this density recommendation. So if staff can help me get to a mixed use, I would support that going to EIR.
Okay, is that a motion?
Sure, but I don't know, I mean, do we, do we restrict the buildable acres? Or do we restrict density, maybe staff could, could recommend?
Yeah, my, my suggestion would be that we probably sort of knock about twenty-five percent off of the capacity, assuming that you're either looking at, you know, a ground floor of, of retail with, with a couple of floors of, of residential above or a portion of the site, you know, kind of more of a horizontal mixed use. You know, that would sort of knock that area out of contention. So I think maybe reducing the overall density by twenty-five to thirty percent would be realistic if you included a mixed-use component and did not want the buildings to get bigger.
Yeah, okay, so continuing on that, then I, I, so I guess I'll come into a density. So I, a quick, quick math, that's a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty units approximately. And let's call it a hundred and sixty units divided by seven-point-three-three acres, twenty-one units per acre. So I guess that's kind of in your fifteen to twenty-five range.
Uh, you just lost me in the math there, Mr. CPA, but.
Sorry.
That was right.
Someone else can.
Oh wait, but wouldn't you be more like twenty to thirty? Because dropping from thirty to twenty is a thirty percent reduction and dropping from forty to thirty is, is a twenty-five percent reduction. So you could get the zoning you're looking for at a twenty to thirty.
Or maybe said a little differently, if you assumed that, you know, two and a half out of the seven, you know, plus acres were going to be non-residential, that would get you to.
Five, basically.
I was trying to stay within your density bands that you have used throughout the rest of the presentation, but I don't think we're doing that very well here. But I, I mean, if it is twenty to thirty, I could, I could probably do that. Again, for EIR, right? And my comment is, sorry.
All right, I was gonna say, so, so if you, if you, if you reduce the density of the site, you would no longer be able to count these as lower income units. So it might be, if you were interested in retaining them in that part of the inventory, it might be better to sort of think about a, a smaller site area at a similar density versus a lower density across the whole site.
I like that better because of the locations to the school, the park across the street and some of the amenities. So I would be more willing to do that. Are we cutting twenty percent off of the buildable acreage from seven-three to something less?
Yeah, that would be the.
Five-point-five acres is approximately twenty-five percent reduction. I'll make that my motion then.
So five acres at the original zoning of thirty to forty units per acre.
Yeah, so five-point-five acres would have a range of a hundred and sixty-five units to two-hundred-and-twenty units.
You have a motion, all right, Vice Mayor, Arkin?
Yes, thank you. Um, so staff is recommending this one be excluded, so did the planning commission. Why is the city, please clarify that for me, why is the city recommending this be excluded? When, when you mentioned there are business owners that are in favor of going forward.
It was principally in response to public comments that were received and concern about the loss of the businesses and particularly the local serving retail that exists within that center. So that's, that's where the comments were coming from, and that was the reason why the planning commission decided to take it off the list.
Okay, so I, you know, just for me to make some comments on this one, I kind of was more leaning towards take, supporting staff's recommendation and taking this one off. I, I'm not opposed to at some point this be a mixed use and what Councilmember Bolch recommended. I, you know, I think that's a good idea. I just don't think there's really any plan yet, and that is what I heard from the planning commission. There's no real plan for that. I took up some, some notes and, you know, this perhaps a little bit in the future, this could be the direction to go, which I think could actually be good. But for right now, that this, you know, there's no real plan for the, um, for a mixed-use development there. And, and of course, we did get a lot of public comment asking that this is a huge neighborhood amenity. And so I'm more inclined to take it off at this time, but I'm interested in hearing what everybody has to say on it.
Councilmember Bolch?
Thank you. I, a valid comment, Councilmember Arkin. I, my comment is, is that I'm trying to think of the B-list now, personally. The list of sites that may not make it to the housing element, but possibly be needed to backfill. So I, I fully heard the community say they don't want their retail lost, which I'm actually using to, as my, my shtick for the commercial and industrial, trying to get some traction from the fellow council members on that. So I'm trying to say, well, how do we retain the retail? This, this ownership group went to their largest retail tenants, the people that, that actually are there. They need a method to redevelop. And at least for EIR purposes, I would, I'd be interested in putting it in as our, you know, and I'm not trying to pre, pre, pre-design what we'll do for housing element, but, but B-list, so that's where I'm heading.
Councilmember Testa? You're on mute.
It was off, then it went back on all by itself. Um, I'd be inclined to take it off the list because I think we've got plenty of buffer, I don't think we need it. And I think that the community was very clear and so I would not support putting it on the list.
For any part of it at all, okay. Councilmember Narum?
Um, well, I, I would support leaving it on the list at the, whatever it was, the thirty or the, the five acres. I, I would want to see some kind of, you know, that made it through some kind of condition about, you know, no more than ten percent or footage could be lost, some, some kind of restriction so that, that the bulk of the retail would be preserved. I, I tend to think we ought to leave it on and, and it's the EIR, and let's see where we are when we get to the end here, how we are and if we have enough, enough units and things. And, you know, perhaps we can come back and potentially look at, you know, taking it off at the end of this exercise. But it is the EIR, I, I think there is valid concerns expressed by residents in that area. You know, I think we all have favorite spots in that center that we enjoy food and shopping and some of the services and things. So it's kind of one of the tough ones for me, but I would probably support leaving it on and changing it as Councilmember Bolch and Ellen worked out.
Want a clarification on that for everyone? I think we're saying five-point-five acres at thirty assumed density. Okay, thank you, I'm getting a nod from staff, that works out the hundred and sixty-five units, okay.
And not thirty to forty, but you're just doing thirty?
They do the, when you use the higher density, they use the lower end of the densities, they don't use the average.
So at thirty, which is three stories, which does agree, that does back up to some apartments that look very similar. This is also a tough one for me. Mission Plaza, I think we made the right decision by setting that aside and not approving housing on that Mission Plaza site. Tri Valley Inn, I think we made the right decision just to study it and see, but come back with absolutely nothing more than two stories. But Valley Plaza, some portion of that, especially that back area where you're near the apartment building already, I, I could see at least studying it and seeing if it's a viable project. It, it could fall out because the traffic at Santa Rita, as we all know, Santa Rita is a difficult intersection, but some portion of it, so I think it's creative thinking to say, let's just talk about a small portion of Valley Plaza, but retain that mixed-use feel and retain the adjacent Mission Plaza, so. All right, we have a motion made by Councilmember Bolch, I'm not sure if it was seconded. Oh, excuse me, Vice Mayor?
Um, you know, I, I, I understand what you're all saying, and I'm struggling with this one a little bit. I, I really would prefer to take it off, but, um, you know, I, I might be able to live with the recommendation of the five-point-five, that's certainly better than the seven-point-three-three. I think it's, um, good. So I, you know, I go along with it, I'm not crazy about it, to be honest, and I still prefer to take it off. But we are making it clear that this is the EIR process, so for environmental review only at this point. So I, I'll go ahead and support that.
And here that horizontal mixed use, allowing maybe what's in the front right now to stay, which there's UPS and there's Donut Shop and there's other things in the front, and then just looking potentially at zoning in the back for housing. So you still retain those critical services that we talked about earlier. Okay, could we have a roll call vote? Oh, excuse me, I need a second, is that a second, Vice Mayor?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bolch?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Hi.
Councilmember Narum?
Hi.
Councilmember Testa?
Hi.
Mayor Brown?
Hi.
The motion passes unanimously.
Right, we're doing well, and it's a little after ten, site nineteen.
Site nineteen is along Black Avenue, sort of adjacent to the, to the high school. It's recommended for density range of fifteen to twenty-five units to the acre. Site's about two-point-six acres and that would yield fifty-two units at the midpoint. I missed it out off the slide, but the planning commission did recommend inclusion of this site.
Councilmember Bolch?
Yeah, so, uh, without being tarred and feathered, I just would like to raise a conversation point with my fellow council here. So unlike other sites in our community, when I think of the impacted schools, Lydicson, Donlin, and all of those, all along the northern periphery routes. And after sitting at the school, school council liaison meeting back in September where they talked about sites, they talked about how Alisal was a, was, you know, primarily a non-impacted school. It was, you know, they had to have people commute to it, right? Because it was one of the original sites as the community grew outwards. And so it's less impacted. And clearly, this is not my realm and I'm just mentioning. So when I think about the black site surrounded by non-residential currently, these are commercial on both sides. I just would like to maybe mention, we might have an opportunity here, traffic aside, because I know that's a huge issue. But people could walk to every school of their child's life from this site, a park across the street plus retail. Unlike every other site we've had, the primary flaw of this site is the traffic element, and I acknowledge it straight out. But you could walk to every school here. You really could walk to every retail, even downtown, which I did because I think I parked here for the parade. And you could, you have your park at Amador Park. The only challenge is, it's obviously buried in the middle of our community, and so it does not have the transit element. So with that, I, I really hope we think about density here. And that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Are you proposing maybe a higher density? Is that what you're thinking?
I am, but I've talked to staff about it several times. And so, you know, it, it's fraught with peril. There, there's no doubt, right? But if, if we move to the 30 to 40, we get a few more affordable units. It doesn't impact it too terribly much from what their proposal was. It does shift it up, acknowledging that. And, and frankly, I was involved in the planning commission about traffic calming on Black Avenue. So I bring it up because there's a lot at play here. But when I think about what people are getting in their car to do, at least me, I've got an eighth grader. I'm driving him to school. I'm going to the grocery store and then I'm going to work, right? And so we, we possibly could eliminate several trips at this site that we, that we don't really eliminate at other sites, right? So, so if you're over at the mall, you're driving to your, your grocery store and you're driving to your, to your, your child's school. And you're possibly using public transit for, for, for transportation out to the work. I'm just saying here, you, you flip it the other way. So I, I'd be open to comments. I'll say that.
Get our beautiful lap to wheels buses go every 15 minutes called the rapid down San Rita. Just for transit purposes. Yes, Councilmember Narum.
Thank you. I didn't realize I raised my hand, but that's okay. You know, I, I could consider a little higher density here. I, you know, we had the one resident who lived on Black Avenue speak about all the activity at this area between the pool and gingerbread and the post office and Alisal. I frankly, I wouldn't be totally surprised. This came back with huge traffic impacts in the EIR. But we won't know if we don't put it in. So I think we ought to put it in the EIR. I'm open to upping the density unless staff thinks we're crazy. And they can tell us that nicely. But we don't know if we don't put it in, if we don't try. So that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. Council, Vice Mayor Arkin.
Um, yeah, there's some concerns I have with this, this site. And, um, you know, addressing the school impacts, yeah, it's great that it's near a lot of schools. But as we know already, there are students that are, that can't go to their neighborhood school because that school's impacted. So there are people that have to drive their kid to school to another part of town. So that's always a possibility. And I think people generally drive to work. So unless you're a teacher at one of the schools, you, you're probably going to have to drive. So I think the traffic impacts in that area, and that is a heavily impacted traffic area with the schools. So it is a little concerning to me. I, I'm fine with keeping it on the list for the EIR process. But I am not willing to go up in density on this one. I think it's kind of high as it is, but I, I'm willing to accept that, but not go higher.
Okay. Councilmember Testa.
Agree. I don't think that we should increase density. You know what I don't understand is, you know, we look at these assumed capacity, but the maximum capacity is already built in there. So again, these all have a, an additional buffer already built into them. And this one would be a classic SB 35 where it, somebody, you know, could come in and, and add another 25% or 50% density to this. I don't think, I don't think the area could, could handle that. So I wouldn't increase the density.
Couldn't add this additional density unless it was 100% affordable subsidized housing, correct?
Well, no, they can, as, on SB 35, they, they can only go up 50% if they do 100%, but they can do 25%. Ellen, I'm sorry, my head's getting foggy.
Speaking of the housing density bonus law, and it's very much dependent on the proportion of affordable units that you include in the project. And that can allow for, for density bonuses anywhere from 5 to 50%. And then the 100% projects have, have unlimited density, actually, if you want to get into the nitty gritty of it. So, but that's an unusual project. That's 100% affordable.
Exactly. They'd have to come in with 100% affordable, which is very rare, but not impossible. Absolutely. Okay. I had, do not have a motion on the floor, but I've heard lots of good discussions. I agree, Black Avenue is heavily trafficked, but so key. And I go back to the survey that was taken, and I should quote the, the time it was taken, but it's our Exhibit D in the Housing Element Community Survey. This infill project in underutilized business buildings such as the site, they may not be developed today. It might be eight or 10 years from now. But it is an extremely good location for all the things. Councilmember Balch mentioned shopping, schools, parks. It's, it's truly a nice infill project. Yes, Councilmember Balch.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll see if it floats. But for the ERR, I'll propose to keep it in and to increase its density to the 30 to 40 bucket. I believe that yields 78 units for our, excuse me, is that right? 78 units for our capacity number? Yes.
Correct, that'd be 78 to 104.
And, and I should mention, everyone's comments about the ranges and all of it, very valid. I'm not trying to minimize any of them. I'm just trying to think about where we'd impact. So at least for the EIR, I'd like to see if it could support something better. And I will acknowledge, I was there when we talked traffic calming with Mr. De Sano and where to put the speed humps on Black Avenue. So I understand we might be lower when we get there.
So as a topic of discussion, Councilmember, if you go to that density you're referring to of 30 to 40 units per acre, you're talking a four-story building. Everything down there is cedar, black. It's all one story. Do you think that will look unusual?
Good point. You know, the, the reality, I, well, maybe the reason I picked up on it is because there's no additional single-family housing around it, right? So we are surrounded by non-single-family. Yeah, that's a good point. Could see where the group goes.
Yeah, because Councilmember Narum brought up that 15-foot differential that we have in the DSP, the Downtown specific plan. It's about a story, but it's a 15-foot differential that is at maximum. So you don't get that stair-step awkward look. And if you did have an SB 35 density bonus thrown in there, it would truly look like that five-story building we've talked about so frequently on potential project on Harrison Street.
I know.
Yep, yep, yeah.
Mayor, if I could just add something about the 30 to 40 range. As everyone knows, we built a lot of projects at 30 units per acre. You can't go any higher than that without building podium parking. And so they only manage 30 with these, you know, tuck-under parking garages complemented by surface parking on the outside with or without a roof on it. As soon as you go up to 40, you can't park that anymore. And you have to do a podium, and no one will build that project because it's not enough to support it. So when you give this 30 to 40 range, I think you're going to see most projects at 30. I don't see how you could build the, the 40 unit.
Okay, good point.
Maybe a point of clarification. I apologize, Vice Mayor, if I can just ask staff. So I, I thought why, by, I apologize, I thought why I was going to 30 was so that we could then get the affordability element that comes with that density. That is the, I thought, the line in the sand. Would it be more appropriate to just go 20 to 30 as maybe to achieve that concern of the step-ups on heights, total heights?
I mean, I, I think that Brian's point is a good one. And right now, just looking at where we're at with the decisions that you've made, we, we do not have a shortfall of the, of the lower-income housing units. So I think this is one that you could keep at the, you know, the non-high-density range and get more units and not, not be too concerned in it. And on a side of this size, it might fit a bit better with what's around it to keep the density down just a little bit.
Okay, so then is, is 20 to 30 out of line with that? That's just five units step up?
Yeah, 20 to 30 will give you, will yield more units. They just wouldn't be counted as lower-income units.
Yeah. I would, I'd be willing to do that. So I guess I'll move with that.
20 to 30.
Yes, slightly up. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to be able to support that. I won't go over the staff recommendation on this one. I think we're talking about not, I mean, I think it's already going to be an impact to the area. And I think, you know, I think it's going to start looking incompatible with the area there. And the traffic impacts, I'm, I'm still worried about. Yes, you can walk to a lot of things, but there's still going to be traffic impacts. I, I'm, I'm fully supportive of going through the process with the, the staff recommendation, but I don't want to go any higher than that. I just don't think it's fair to those neighborhoods near there and that, the roads there.
Okay, are you willing to modify your motion to staff recommendation?
Well, I led off strong saying why I thought it was a strong site, right? We have all of the schools within walking distance. I mean, if we're, where are we asking people to move to if, if, if not near the schools? What, what, what basis are we using? Your, your, your drive to work, your drive to the retail, the drive to the grocery store, the drive to the school? Because we've eliminated quite a few of them at this particular site. So I, I'd like to stay here.
Okay, let's see if you get a second. All right. Looking for a second to the motion. Motion dies for failure with seconds. Okay, do we have a second for that? All right, seconded by Narum. All right, we have a motion made and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Balch.
Hi.
Councilmember Narum.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Hi.
Councilmember Testa.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Right, Boulder Court.
Site number 20 is Boulder Court. This is a large pair of light industrial parcels currently housing a contractor's yard and material storage. Recommended as a high-density site at 30 to 40 to the acre. Across the 9.45 acres would yield approximately 284 units. And the planning commission's recommendation was to include this site.
Okay, comments, motion? I think everyone's falling asleep. I need somebody to speak. Councilmember, Councilmember Balch, I'll just start picking on people like that.
Yeah, so I'm just going to keep, similar to the comments by Testa about SB 35. I, I'm going to continue to mention that, you know, if we lose our industrial commercial sites throughout town by rezoning of the housing, we will not be a holistic community for the needs of our community. And so you will pay more to have your house remodeled, your windows replaced, your garbage disposal installed, all of those things, plus whatnot. So Boulder Court is one that is similar to my comments with Old Santa Rita. Do I think it's an underutilized site? Potentially so. It's on the east side. Where's the school? So we're still impacting from the 1,400-plus units we've put on, on Santa Rita, now Valley, right? That Valley-Santa Rita intersection. And so I just worry about all of that. The only nuance here is that Boulder Court, you can turn left on the, or excuse me, yeah, right on the Valley, right on to Santa Rita and get in our community. So I just worry about rezoning all of these. For the EIR, though, I do think I'll move staff's recommendation. But I'm bringing the issue up.
We hear you. Okay.
I'll second it with the same concern. But let's put it to the EIR and see what we get.
Okay with that? All right, take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Balch.
Hi.
Councilmember Narum.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Hi.
Councilmember Testa.
Hi.
Mayor Brown.
Hi.
The motion passes unanimously.
21A.
So this is the, the Keywood site. It's about a 50-acre parcel on the east side, just adjacent to the, one of the sites we just talked about. The proposal here is actually for a mixed-density project. A portion, about five acres, would be designated for high-density affordable housing. And then the remainder at medium-density, eight to 14 units to the acre, generally small lot, single-family. That yields a total of 690 units. The planning commission's recommendation was to include this site.
Okay. Councilmember Balch, it is industrial.
Yeah, but my nuance here is, and, and, you know, I'll just say it, and we got to think about it. We have the east side challenge that's upon us. And I don't, you know, we're going to, we're going to have this conversation at some point during this entire housing element process. And 690 units, what, 10 trips per house and on average in Pleasanton? You know, and, and I don't know what the EIR will show, but I am strongly concerned about what Valley Avenue is doing. So yes, I think we need it in the EIR. And the reason I think we need it in is so that we can figure out what type of infrastructure improvements we need on this side of our community so that we do not chokehold this side of our community. So I'm moving staff's recommendation, but I'm worried.
Hey. I, I hear that a lot. Hear that a lot, very concerned. And, and I share that completely. That we are, through this, a mandatory state process of meeting our HCD and our ABAG requirements are extremely concerning. But we're going to do what we are because, we have to do what we're doing because we are part of the state of California and they mandate it. So. Vice Mayor Arkin.
Yes, thank you. I, I'm concerned too. I, I agree with you. This is a hard process to go through and the impacts to our residents, impacts to our businesses. I, I think they are all very, very valid concerns. And I would just add one other thing to what Mayor Brown just said. Yes, that we are being forced to do this. The state is making us do this. And I would recommend, you know, these are state laws being passed by state legislators, not us. And for the community to please write, call, do whatever you can, email whatever your state legislators and tell them how you feel, because that's the way state laws get made. And if there's enough public outcry, then perhaps things can change. So I just wanted to add that little tidbit, but I absolutely agree that this, you know. So I just wanted to add that little tidbit, but I absolutely agree that this, you know, there are concerns with these, so.
Yep, don't like it, but we have a motion for staff recommendation for the twenty-one A site. And I guess twenty-one B site. Sorry, Vice Mayor, did you second that motion?
I seconded it.
Thank you, okay. I don't see hands up, so we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
House Member Bolch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Narum.
Aye.
Councilmember Testa.
Aye.
Mayor Brown.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Down to just a handful left, see if we can get done by eleven. Okay, staff?
Site twenty-two, switching gears a little bit, is the Merit property over in the western side of the city. This is a site that's currently outside of the city limits, would be proposed for annexation. And there's current developer interest in a project that would yield at least ninety-one units across the forty-five or so acres of the site, equivalent density of about two units to the acre. So the planning commission's recommendation was to include this site in the inventory.
That's an extremely low density compared to what we're talking about and really making a dent in our six thousand housing units. Can you share why the planning commission would recommend going to all the trouble of annexing the property through the LAFCO, the LAFCO process for only ninety-one units? I mean, we've got two acres that are doing almost ninety-one units. And here I've got forty-five and a half acres in only ninety-one units. So was the planning commission recommending any change in density?
So this this site has a few constraints. Obviously, it has freeway proximity at the rear. And so you need to incorporate a pretty good buffer to reduce noise impacts to residential uses in there. Like all the rest of the neighborhoods have sort of that strip of buffering. There are a couple of pieces of this site that are proposed to be reserved for the, for the owners, the family who owns the property to retain single-family homes on those units. And then once you add in things like the community amenity, circulation and so on. You know, the the lots actually are not rural estate-type lots. They're more, you know, fairly conventionally-sized, single-family property parcels. So that's, I think an important point also is that this, that density is consistent with what the general plan designation is for this site. Actually has a general plan designation of low-density residential, and so this is consistent with that as well. And they're not proposing to exceed what the general plan currently allows for. So those are, those are some of the contributing reasons why the the densities propose where it is. And I should, I should say, out of fairness to the applicant, the project that actually we're that they've proposed to bring forward actually does include a little bit more density in the form of some affordable housing units and a small-density bonus to achieve that. And which is unusual for a single-family residential project to include that increment of affordability as well. So this is the minimum consistent with the zoning and we think represents a realistic capacity for the site.
And the project was for age restrictions, right? So seniors?
A senior, proposed to be a senior housing project or senior housing age-restricted development.
So when we look at traffic, we're really looking at off-hours, most likely trips. Cause Foothill is obviously an extremely busy street.
Yeah, tends to reduce the number of vehicle trips and obviously the school impacts are, you know, don't exist with a, with a senior community.
Love that. Great. Councilmember Bolch?
You asked a few of my questions, Mary, because I read in it as well about the seniors. And so given that we have an exact number on this one, staff, we're basically saying we have a project and that's why we're going with the number across the board on density and all of it. Okay, and then I'm seeing a nod there. And then in terms of the seniors element as well. Oh, excuse me, it's the the Foothill. The the project did include Foothill Road improvements, did it not, at least on the front edge?
That's our understanding, yes, is that that there would be improvements along Foothill to upgrade that. And Mike is nodding as well, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
So one second, Councilmember Testa. So in the past, this project came to the voters and it was rejected. And that was many years ago. But if I recall, it's because Ingress Egress was on the side streets, not all off of Foothill. And this may, this is well before Ellen, you came to City of Pleasanton. But is this project being designed for Ingress Egress off of Foothill? Or would it continue to have access from some of these side streets?
No, that the the applicant is, has learned from the issues that were raised during the referendum. And so generally, we, all of the access for the residents would be from Foothill. The only access from these neighborhood streets would be for EVAs, pegs and bicycles.
Emergencies, trails, pedestrian and bicycles. Okay, thank you. But Councilmember Testa.
Um, are, in the ninety-one units, are ADUs included in that?
Um, I don't recall if ADUs are proposed, but typically those would not count against the density of the project per state law. So the ninety-one is the primary units and any ADUs would be additive, but would not increase the technical unit count for the project.
Okay, so, so it could still have ADUs. They just aren't yet reflected, is what you're saying.
Yeah, this, the city cannot restrict the construction of the ADUs. So by state law, we, you know, have to allow them. In, you know, in increasing number of PUDs, we're seeing developers sort of plan them into the project. And that's probably a better way to go because you know what you're gonna get. So I I don't, although I don't recall if ADUs are part of this.
I don't, I don't think that the project as a design includes any. And even just my recollection from quite a while back, when I actually was shown a copy of what they were thinking about. I'm not sure that the site plan would accommodate it. As, as Ellen said, these are not super-large lots when it's all said and done, because there's a fair amount of public. You know, it's a pretty high-end project, age-restricted. There are a lot of amenities included, pool, pickleball, a meeting room. And the lots are not that large.
Really, I I remember when it was shown to me, they were very large lots. And there was discussion about, they were very large lots. And there was, because it was really stunning to think for a fifty-five and older. I don't want a large lot anymore. Too much maintenance, too much work, but they felt confident that there's a demand for it, so wonderful, they're gonna be lovely. But there was discussion about the ADU and my question was going to be if there, while we are, of course, required under ADU law to allow them, if it's an age-restricted community, there was some question about whether an ADU could be AD, age-restricted. So if, and and if in fact there are going to be ADUs, I would want that reflected now so that we get to count those units towards our arena. So I, you know, just can we make sure that we have the answers to that when we have our next discussion? But that's all.
I think you. Councilmember Narum?
Thank you. I think, you know, this is a good use of the land. Taking into account the busyness of Foothill Road with the high school and Lydixon. And so it's my understanding that when the project was referenced, there were lots of meetings afterwards and agreements made with the neighbors bordering. And, you know, they agreed to keep a buffer between the back of the existing residents and the, and the homes and stuff. And that's why some of the lots may appear big. But, you know, this project's gonna fix a lot of problems on Foothill Road and as somebody that has to drive it every day. I know residents are gonna be happy about that for a lot of reasons. So I, you know, I think we ought to include this in and and go for the density. And I think it's pretty significant that at least I haven't received one comment about this, this go-around from any of the residents in around. So I think I, I just think this is one we put forward. And I'm happy to make that motion.
I can't support the motion. That is, we're talking about housing and yes, there is infrastructure, I understand. But two units to the acre? And this, the numbers reflected in our statistics are forty-five acres of buildable acres. Taking into consideration that the existing home is not buildable sites. And yes, you're going to have to add some roads, but this is such a low density that if we're looking to, to carve out, guess what? The people that lived on Monaco, they didn't plan on having housing when they moved in. They thought the school district office was going to be there. And this is a different world. We didn't have six thousand housing units a year ago. We have it now. And I very much respect the developers and the outreach that they have done to that community. But my understanding, the real conflict was cut through traffic down these side streets. And if we can make sure that never happens, that is eliminated from this project. Certainly, of course, don't want something crazy like thirty units to the acre. But I sure would like to see more affordable, more than their small number of twenty-two and a hundred and eleven units. But twenty-two affordable courtyards and duets. Duets are exactly what the single-family senior housing, what projects look like. Ironwood, to Councilmember Testa's point of view, the Ironwood villages, they are on much smaller than sixty-five hundred square-foot lots. They are close together. They are low-maintenance yards, so people can travel. And it reduces the cost of housing for seniors if they don't have a third of an acre to maintain. So I can't support the motion and I would like to request that we increase density at least to fifteen units to the acre. And I don't want stacked housing in there. I don't want that old stack-and-pack four stories. I just want some reasonable density in this last parcel of open space. And it's near, it's not far to get to the Star Ridge Mall. It's not far to get to Lucky's Grocery Store. It's not far to get to Bart, Five Eighty and Six Eighty. It's, and of course, not that it would matter, there's no impact on the schools. We keep talking about schools and here it's a senior community with virtually no impact on the schools. So plus, they pay the taxes to help support the schools. So those are my thoughts. Vice Mayor Arkin.
Um, okay, I I actually liked the project when it was, when I had seen it. And I think there's a few reasons. Bear with me, it's starting to get late. I think we do have to be sensitive to the neighborhoods behind there. And as I understand it, there isn't going to be that issue with the Ingress-Egress on that. Because that was a big issue when that referendum happened. I remember that vividly. So I think that has been addressed. I think there are a lot of amen, a lot of amenities being given on this project. I, what I like about it, it it is senior housing, which I think there is a need for in our community, and I'm glad we're doing more of it. I think having some high-end senior housing is a good thing. I mean, we have some, we already have some lower-income senior housing in our community. And there will be some with this one as well. But I think for those seniors that may still want a little bit larger lot, this will satisfy that need. And I think, you know, I I don't know, I I I'm supportive of this one. I think this one is a great project for the area and it's, and it's being sensitive to the neighborhood concerns, which I really like. The amenities being offered, and I think it offers another option for our seniors in town with some affordable and some higher end. So I think I'm gonna be supportive of it.
Well, I'm glad to hear you say you support the neighbors, but we just said that in historic downtown. And we support all neighborhoods, but it's difficult to say these neighbors have a difference support level than the folks that live on First and Second Street. It's pretty frustrating. It's just hard to support for me. But when we talk about amenities, my understanding is those are behind a security gate. Those are amenities to the people that are within the community. They're not amenities to the public. At least when I saw it, it was a security gate. Brian, do you remember? I'm sorry, City Manager Dolan?
I don't remember if it was gated or not, but I'm fairly certain that those are for the community, not for the public.
Okay. I I am under the understanding there was a, a I could have sworn, and now it's been a little time, it has passed, but I thought there was a dedicated trail or link.
I think that there may be a trail, but nobody's using the pool.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that amenity, but I thought there was a I could have sworn there was a pathway type of
Yes, I recall that as well.
It was near the freeway. Yeah, it was towards the back, near the freeway, and so that they could have pedestrian trails, so. Yep. Sorry, Councilmember Bolch, thank you for your patience, yes.
Well, I mean, all good comments, so no problem in waiting. I will mention, we, at the top of the hour, we approved Lester at approximately two units per acre, so just down the road. So I'm I'm having a little bit of whiplash with inconsistency amongst us. But but so so where I'm at is I think about Foothill Road's impacts with the high school, the traffic on the high school and dealing with all of that. The project gives significant improvements to Foothill Road. Last time I looked at it and confirmed by our traffic engineer now. Would I have liked to see the density be greater? Yes, but that's not the project that we have in front of us. And so I'm willing to support the project based upon its outline now. I think they have reached out to the community to try to address their their comments. And it's, it's providing a housing for a different segment of the population in our community, so I'm willing to support it.
Okay, I'll throw one last comment in and then I will, I will go with the majority of however you end up doing it. But the units that sell with small lots that are ten years old now, over in the villages, are selling for one point five to one point eight million. So even a wealthy senior will have trouble affording these large lot homes. So with that, I mean, these are, these are truly executive homes. And the comparison to the Lester property, or that's not right, compared to Site One. Yeah, Lester, those were mostly hillside, so it's unbuildable. It's not like you've got flatland like this, which is just one big piece of flatland that runs from Foothill to the freeway. But with that, I will be quiet and thank you for listening to me. We have, who made the motion on this? I lost.
I did, I did.
Thank you, Councilmember Narum. May I do have a second officially?
I'll second.
All right, sounds good. Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
House Member Narum.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolch.
Aye.
Councilmember Testa.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
I'll support it. So go into the EIR, yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Snoll property. Little Boulevard, sorry.
Site twenty-three is the Snoll Boulevard area comprising multiple properties. I believe there's three or four in the area. Total of about twenty-four acres, recommended as a higher-density site at thirty to forty to the acre and yielding about seven hundred and seventeen units. It was the planning commission's recommendation to include this site.
Yes, Councilmember Bolch, Councilmember Bolch, sorry, late.
No worries. So I will be consistent hopefully with myself and say that I am a little worried about giving up. You know, sites like this, so similar to what we did on Santa Rita with with the Valley Mission Plaza kind of concept. I would consider or like to raise a question with my fellow council members about possibly restricting the developable, developable area. About possibly restricting the developable, developable area and achieve more of a mixed use on a portion of it. So that we do still continue to have that and not the entire site be housing. That, I, I'll leave that for fodder or consideration by the body. The second part of it that I'd like to bring up or mention is, uh, when I think about this particular site, this is a large site anchoring the south of town. We don't typically have sites like this at the southern portion of town that get identified for, for housing. I know we've already dealt with the school district site on its own. So, uh, I think if we are truly putting our, our votes where our mouth is on, on balancing the impacts across the community. It needs to be considered in or advanced in in some regard. That being said, it only has Hearst and PMS schools. I don't really know the transit options, except possibly the bus, although it does have the six-eighty interchange, which is significantly impacted. I use that one, Mr. Tassano, I'm ready for that one to be rebuilt right away, please. So, uh. Taking that all into account, I think it's an appropriate site for housing, again, anchoring the south part of town, balancing across our community. I would be open to considering, uh, mixed use or somehow restricting the developable area so that we retain some element of it. So that's where I'm at.
You don't think there was a motion in there, correct? Just concerns.
Not yet, because I was, I was providing commentary. Maybe I should start making motions at eleven o'clock.
That's okay, we're going over to Vice Mayor Arkin.
Yes, well, I appreciate the comment about spreading impact across the community. Because I think that is, that is a valid comment and, and that's a concern of spreading it across the community. And so, and this does that. I believe we got a letter from the business owner, um, Richard Lumber, that was in agreement with this. Am I correct? Am I remembering this correctly?
Yes, Richard family has agreed, and we also received indication of interest from the warehouse owner, the Cheetah Foods.
Okay, and they are in favor of the, they're in agreement with the suggested recommended density, correct?
Uh, well, just in this being a housing site, and they had, they had no objection to the density as far as I'm aware.
Did they, did they have any concern, and I'm trying to remember that letter now, from the Richard Lumber owner about mixed, having it designated mixed use? Or is that something we need to address now?
I don't recall, Jennifer, do you? Do you know?
No, I think, I think they were more favorable to have it one or the other. To, you know, either sell the property or, or continue to run it as is. I'm not sure for their specific site, how they would be able to divide it to be mixed use for their specific site.
Okay, well, I think the mixed use comment's a good one. I think I would like to see that. I don't know if we need to decide that here and now, going into the environmental process. But, um, I will go ahead and make a motion that we support staff's recommendation on Snoll Boulevard Properties Number Twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Comments there, Councilmember Narum, before we?
No, I mean, I, I absolutely agree with, um. Uh, the comment about trying to balance this across the community, balance these sites across the community. And this is, you know, this is it down at the southern part. My recollection of the, of the Richard Lumber letter was that, you know, they wanted to have that option someday. That it wasn't something they necessarily wanted to do immediately, but they, they were certainly wanting that option. And so, why not? They've certainly been a, you know, a longstanding great family in the community. And, and if that's something they want, I, I'm happy to help them with that. I think, and again, it's, it's going into the EIR, so we'll see where it all comes out.
My comment said that there are four owners out of the five parcels, so it will be naturally mixed. It doesn't mean everybody would all have to come forward for development. It can still be parceled out in these projects. And, and we've been talking about schools, it's around the corner from Pleasanton Middle School and Phoebe Hurst Elementary. So it's got, walk to the grocery store and it's in good transit area too. So it's got good locations and it received quite a few points. It's one of the highest sites for points on our, on our roster. So I didn't mean to step on top of you, Councilmember Testa, did you have a comment?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion made in second. Could we take a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Hi.
Councilmember Narum.
Hi.
Councilmember Balt.
Hi.
Councilmember Testa.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
It is eleven o'clock and I, I just want to confer there with our city manager. We've got a few sites left and then I guess we'll need to go through and make sure our cumulative totals. Are sufficient for the studies, is that right?
Yes, we, we're doing okay so far. I think we're. Yeah, based on the decisions that have been made so far, assuming you don't, well, I, I think even if you, if you added no more sites, you would have sufficient. Inventory, so you may in fact want to go back and possibly take some off the list.
Yeah, we might, and that, that I think is considerable work. We still have five sites to go through. So I just want to talk to my city council members. I know I've heard a couple of comments about people being tired. We do have an earmark for a possible, and hopefully it would be a short meeting, one more special meeting. I know this is a really big part of what we do and a very, very important part of being a council, city council. So how do you feel about powering through or stopping to do the five sites and the cumulative totals?
Power through.
I think power through as well.
Power through.
Okay, we've got a majority.
And everybody stopped talking so much now.
I like it. Okay, Sonoma Drive.
Who's staff recommendation?
Can we see it on the screen?
Recommendation is to include this site. It's a property that has multiple owners, including some vacant parcels. Um, about six and a half acres, recommended for medium density, fifteen to twenty-five to the acre and yielding approximately one hundred and thirty-one units.
Right, uh, we have a motion made and seconded. So could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Balt.
Hi.
Councilmember Narum.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Hi.
Councilmember Testa.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, well, we can skip twenty-five and twenty-six since those were already discussed. So we'll move directly on to twenty-seven, which is the USD property located on Vineyards. Also known as Neil, the Neil property. It is a acres, although only half is being recommended for development. Since the other half was in the specific plan, considered to be a possible open space area. At the time, um, the recommendation is for a relatively low-density yielding, two units the acre, yielding ten units in total. And I did want to note the school district's ask, which was to increase the density on that site to yield more, more value potentially from the property.
Councilmember Testa.
Don't want to repeat everything that's already been said. We're, we're upzoning twenty percent of more of our community. Um, our schools are already impacted. If the district came and said, we want to do a land swap for someplace else in another part of town where it's a better-located site. I would support it, but to continue to eliminate future potential school sites without replacement is irresponsible. So I would, I move that we remove this from the list.
Thank you. Councilmember Narum.
So I had a question on this, on the. The amount of land that's being proposed to be rezoned. As I understand, it's a ten-acre site. And we are only proposing, or it's only being proposed to do five acres and keep the other five acres to a park. Is there some kind of documentation or agreement or, I mean, how did we get there? I guess.
Well, I'll take this one, Ellen. That was staff-initiated some time ago. In our discussions with the school district. And the rationale was, uh, the Vineyard-specific plan identifies a site for a community park. It's on the old landfill. And the reality is there are significant methane gas problems there. And that is very unlikely to ever become a park. And so. The, the specific plan also envisioned this site as a school, which as you know, would have some play area. And, um. So i-if they never got their park, at least they might have a school where you could go and get some exercise with the kids. And so the idea was, if it's going to be turned over to residential, this whole community out there in the Vineyard Corridor has no park. And so the remainder was, uh, the staff's perspective was that, yeah, we'd be willing to support giving up part of it. Um, so that the school district could, you know, whatever they want to do for their flexibility, you know, raise money. But we should retain some of it. You know, we talked about half and half. That doesn't have to be the case. It could be a smaller park. But our neighborhood parks are typically five acres.
Okay, and Ellen, how do you feel about the, the requested density increase at this site?
Um, the density was selected based on what's around it, which is in around that, that LDR, you know. Two units the acre, um, sort of density. So, you know, you, you know, conceivably you could bump it up a little bit. Uh, it'd still fit in, but it starts to get at some point, you know, feel a little denser than what's around it. That's the more rural residential type of density. So that was, that was staff's logic there.
Okay, and so the school district, the school board has requested this to be. Rezoned, correct?
They, they would, I think in the school district's ideal world, this whole site would be housing and it would be a higher density. So given that, you know, as Brian said, our, the city's desire would be to retain some of it as open space. They're saying, well, could we get a little more density on the piece that would be, that would be housing just to yield more value from the, from the land, basically.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Arkin.
Okay, so. I'm, I'm concerned. We kept on, we kept the Donlin property on. And we're looking at taking, keeping this one on. And what my concern is, thinking about the students in this community, future students in this community, based on all this housing we're zoning for. There's not going to be any land that the school district has to build another site. When we looked to, and I was on the board, the school board, when we made the decision to put the new school on the Donlin site. That wasn't an ideal place to put it. I, I wasn't thrilled with it, but it was really our only choice. Because, and we had the city's help with this, and I appreciate the city's help with this, by the way. I think I said thank you before. I'll say thank you again. The city helped us try to find suitable land for a new school in the northeast area of this community. They could not locate any. There was no suitable land or sale or it just, they said no. I mean, and, and I believe they put a great effort towards that. So I'm kind of concerned with now we have a piece of land, and I agree with Councilmember Testa. If this were a land swap, I, I would absolutely be in agreement with that. I have a feeling though, that if they, the school district, and I'm not on the board anymore, could have done a swap by now, they would have. And my guess is they can't, or they haven't been able to. So I'm concerned with giving up the land again. As I said, every facilities consultant with, with this, at the, at the state level, the School Boards Association. It says you don't give up land you currently have, even if it's not suitable for a school site right now. So I'm a little. I'm a little concerned. I'm a little concerned. You know, like I said, I, we've got to look at our, you know, yes, the school board can make a decision on what they want to do with their land. And they can make any decision what to do with their land, but we're responsible for zoning. And it's our decision on whether to rezone it for housing or not. So that's our charge. And I think, you know, looking about, you know, looking at. Being concerned about current students and again, looking at the big picture of future students. Um, I'm concerned and I don't think I want to take this, I don't, I don't think I want to keep this one on the list. I'm sorry. I just, uh, with having Donlin on the list, I can't see having this one as well and giving up all rights to the property. I, I, I just think, I, I just think it's not an appropriate thing to do, in, in my opinion, so.
I ask you just a follow-on question, sorry, before you put your hand down. Uh, when you were on the school board and this was a potential site for an elementary school, it was never chosen. I know land swap would be wonderful, but this site was never chosen. Is that because it's not suitable for a school?
It was chosen because it wasn't, when, in my tenure on the board, because the school district already had this land purchased. It was not chosen and we chose the Donlin site. Because that's the area where the Vineyard property is, is not where we have the hi, the highest impact. The highest impact is in the northeast area. So then we decided to go on to the Donlin site. But now that's going to be given up. At least it looks that way with going through this process. So that's my concern, is that giving up. Anyhow, I, I, I have concerns with keeping this on.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Balt.
Yeah, so, I mean, I have concerns with all of it and I think everyone's raising valid points. Uh, the nuance is, is that we're not giving it up. That's, we're, we're, we're enabling the school district to have options, in my opinion. And they will evaluate in their purview whether to develop the site or not. Uh, based upon the options, we are either affording them or not. And so at least for EIR, I, I mean, I think to exactly what Councilmember, um, Arkin said. The, if you look at the town and we've been looking at the district draft maps. There's not a lot of growth on the, on the southwest side of town. It's, it's landlocked by the quarries or by the hills. So I, I think that what the school's got is they've got a situation where they don't have the sites in the right location for the way the community is growing out. And so, um, I, I did have a question. So, so are we building homes on, on a methane distributing site? By the way, did that come through in the staff report? Because I'm not sure I want kids playing around on a playground that's on a methane site either.
No, my point was the designated park site in the Vineyard Corridor has meth. It's the old landfill site and there is methane. And that's why I suspect, um, we will not ever, at least anytime soon. Have a park out there at that site.
Okay, so, so I, I personally, I think the East Bay Regional Park System, uh, basically across the street from this. Uh, with access to Shadow Cliffs provides, uh, potentially a way where we could do it. As a former park and rec commissioner, though, I, I understand our concept of a community or neighborhood park within every walkable distance of everyone in our community. Something after COVID we've seen is extremely critical. I think we've got a bridge with East Bay Regional, so I'd actually be considerate of letting the whole thing zone up. But knowing that I'm giving the school district choices, I'm not restricting them from options. And they need to really, uh, evaluate how to serve our children. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Testa.
We're not giving them choices because there aren't choices. Vice Mayor Arkin was completely accurate in saying, we went through this, this process with the district. Several years back where any potential school site in the city was identified. There was a list that was made and it was determined that there were not other options. And it was determined that there were not other options. So eliminating these sites. Leave us with no future options. What it leaves us with are future mega schools. Our elementary schools that were supposed to be 500 students, then went up to 600, then went up to 700. Will permanently be thousand student schools and we will have no options. Brian, my understanding was the, um, methane park is not this piece of land. The old, um, landfill is the piece of land that was somewhere.
That's correct. That's what I said.
Petron, Petronavi or something like that, right?
It's right. It's.
Okay, so it, it's, it's not where this would be. So I, I would certainly think, um, it would be more desirable to that part of town that was promised a school. For decades and never got it, um, to at least have a half of the land via park. And the, one of the major reasons that it was identified as not being a viable site was the district's reluctance to do boundary changes. The district is now planning to do boundary changes. So in fact, if that became a school with boundary changes, it wouldn't be. The ideal site, but at least it would give us. Options. Um, that's all.
Okay. Well, I, I think everybody's made really good points. So everybody's really done their homework on this site and maybe even has. Followed it for, since its inception. But, uh, I do support giving the school district as many options as possible. If the site is zoned, they can certainly retain the property and leave it the way it is. They may have the opportunity to net more money from the sale of this property to go purchase something in another location that they couldn't afford before. Uh, and as we've seen, the number of sites that have come forward on this, I am so impressed with staff, really, um. Talking to the landowners and coming up with many sites that I had no idea would even be considered. For something like a zoning to residential housing, so hats off to them. So, um, I will support an increase in two dwelling units per acre. Because, um, I formerly lived in a neighborhood that had custom homes, tract homes, townhomes and patio homes. And I think everybody benefits, uh, by that mixed use of, um, of zoning styles and. Two units to the acre, again, I'm not really a fan of huge lots. We're talking about cap two, we're talking about water reduction. Huge lots don't fall in line with that either. So it's some increased zoning on that site to give the school district the options. If they desire, if they reach the numbers that they're looking for, um, they can, they can make that decision. It is ultimately their decision. So Councilmember Narum, you had talked in originally about an increase in zoning. What number were you thinking?
Thank you. Uh, I was thinking three to four units to the acre.
So I'm trying to get into almost a small, smaller home or a patty home, more affordable home, I guess, but, um, but not multi-story, not.
Right, something compatible or reasonably compatible.
Three to five, maybe something like that?
Three to five's good. I was just going to suggest that.
That sixty-five hundred are sixty-five hundred. Okay, would you make a motion, maybe? And we'll see what we have.
Um, didn't, don't, I'm sorry, it's late. Did I totally imagine that I made a motion? I thought I made a motion in the beginning. To take it off the site. I mean, take it off.
You, you did make a motion, take it off the site. I'm, I don't know if you had a second. Uh, Councilmember Arkin, did you second her motion?
I'll second.
Okay, all right, let's, let's take a vote on that first. Uh, we have a motion made and seconded. Roll call vote, please, to take Site 27 off the EIR list.
Councilmember Testa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Hi.
Councilmember Balch?
No.
Councilmember Narum?
No.
Council, sorry, Mayor Brown?
Sorry, no.
The motion fails two through.
Okay, so we have a replacement motion or?
So I'll move, uh, that we, uh, put the site in the E, EIR. With a, uh, density of three to five units to the acre and, um. Uh, and that we put the five acres in and we retain five acres for, for open space.
I'll second.
Okay, can we roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Narum?
Hi.
Councilmember Balch?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
No, sorry.
Councilmember Testa?
No.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes three, two.
Okay, Steel Wave Sites 28 A and B.
Um, so the Steel Wave property is, uh, in East Pleasanton. Uh, it's a large site, um, about a hundred and twenty-three acres. Uh, similar to the Kiwet property, uh, the property owner is proposing a mixed density development, including. Acres, uh, dedicated to high-density housing, affordable housing at thirty to the acre. And then the remainder at a, a medium, uh, more, more medium density, hundred, for a hundred and eighteen acres. Um, that yields, given the size of the site, uh, total of, of, uh, over thirteen hundred housing units potentially. Uh, the planning commission's recommendation was not to include this site.
Questions? Motion?
I'll go ahead and, uh, move that we accept, um, staff's recommendation on, are we doing A and B or just A?
You could split them, although I sort of looked at them together, so, uh, depends on if you would like to treat the two pieces separately.
Okay, um, okay, I'll put them together, 28A and 28B. Um, and 28B is also recommended for excluding, right?
That's right, both of, both of the twos.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move that we accept staff's recommendation and exclude 28A and 28B.
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilmember Balch?
Yeah, so, I, uh, I would strongly ask us to put them into the EIR. Uh, I know it shoots the moon on the number of the units, so, uh. You know, and maybe we're working on the density numbers or the developable acres numbers here. But the reason is, is we are, uh, going through this exercise, densifying the entire rest of our community. And frankly, you know, I've, I've had a lot of consternation about going up or going out. Uh, and, and that decision is very difficult for me. Do we, do we go six stories, seven stories as we are talking about with some of these densities? Or do we, uh, sprawl, right? And, and both have, uh, pluses and minuses. But the reason I ask that we really consider about putting this in the EIR is for a couple of different reasons. Uh, first, uh, how do we have? Any concept of what Amazon will do out there if we don't actually study the site and potentially the. El Charro, uh, alignment or no alignment? Because I don't know what we should do with that. What is the traffic to, uh, Valley and Santa Rita and Valley and Stone Ridge? Uh, the next item or issue is again, the densification of the rest of our community without knowing if there is an option to expand out. And I'm not sure the community would like to see more high multi-density, high-density projects. Versus possibly bring this online, which could support additional amenities that are public accessible, such as, uh, you know, and we all. Are aware of the East Side specific plan. Uh, I sat on it for a very short time, uh, uh, at its tail end. So, you know, I don't know if a school site or a park or a carbon sequestration element is a part of this. But if we don't, if we don't look at it in the EIR, if we don't see it now. We really are, as a, as a council, choosing to densify the rest of our community. And then the third reason for why I would like us to consider it is because when I look at the sites, yes, we've achieved the. Extra bonus that staff has outlined. But we have significant gorilla sites, sites that are very large. I mean, uh, you know, Old Santa Rita, six hundred and fifty-five units. South Sunol Boulevard, seven hundred and seventeen units and the mall at nine hundred. Well, my point to us is that if any of those fall off because their EIR shows challenges and we have to backfill. There's not a lot of permutations on our options that let us have an ability to still meet the housing element. And so while I completely understand. The angst about the east side. Uh, I am terribly worried, and I'm going to go back to when I said at Kiwet, that we're chokeholding the east, uh, portion of our community, excuse me, the west portion. Yeah, the east portion of our community, a little late, uh, with traffic if we don't study it in, in totality. So I, I've laid out several reasons why I think it should go on. You know, maybe it's a little different, uh, again, density and whatnot for study. But I think, how do I justify increasing density, traffic and cars throughout the rest of our community? Uh, going up when, when out might be an option or at least a portion of the option. Uh, to reduce those impacts at other parts of our community. Thank you for listening.
Well, that area is, I'll respond a little bit, just with thoughts, um, you know, thank you, thank you for think, for carefully thinking about the site. That is zoned industrial right now. The developer, the, uh, rock quarries have asked. That when they were rock quarrying and the city of Pleasanton was being developed, they needed that buffer. So they didn't have children in their rock quarries and they had, they had required it, asked for it, and it has been there for decades. And, uh, it is a perfect location for industrial uses, which you, Councilmember Balch, were arguing for so many times earlier this evening. You want industrial uses, this is the site. If you want to store cars that haven't been sold, this is a great site for it. But it's a bad site for development because there's no infrastructure. The cost of building a road from El Charro down to Stanley was estimated at a hundred million dollars. There's no way you're getting those kinds of transportation dollars from a, an area that needs significant expenses. Just to develop the roads, the water, the sewer, all the things necessary out there. In, in addition, that El Charro parcel, that El Charro Road continuation goes right between two drinking water lakes. And there's been significant discussion about the safety of car exhaust. Truck exhaust and cut-through traffic encouragement off of 580 to cut right down First Street. So I just cannot support that's the east side location for anything other than, um, industrial. And by the way, when the metrics that we picked, this council picked to rank sites. This site was the bottom at twelve points, the worst site for development in the entire city. And that was the Steel Wave site. So, uh, I did sit on that east side project. I attended many meetings, even though, um, I was elected and couldn't sit on it anymore. They were not affordable housing because you can't put affordable housing out there because the cost of infrastructure is so significant. And overwhelmingly expensive. So many people in our town came, uh, hun, over a hundred people came and spoke. And they said it's sprawl. They didn't want it. And, uh, it was very controversial, as you might recall. So, um, Councilmember, or sorry, Vice Mayor Arkin?
Yeah, just a comment, um. A hundred million dollars is what it costs to build a high school too. So keep that in mind as we need new schools. So just. When you said a hundred million dollars, I had to add that. Um, I, I actually agree with what Mayor Brown just said. Um, you know, affordable housing needs to be near key transit hubs and this doesn't check that box. Um, the infrastructure's not out there. Um, I think one of the members of the public said last time, it's a loser on climate action because it's not as carbon neutrals. And I have to, I tend to agree with that. Um, and I really think, you know, we do need the big picture, full analysis of it, and it was a very contentious issue with the east side. Uh, meetings that went on. So I think there needs to be, uh. Further analysis. I think we need to do it thoughtfully, um, when we are talking about that area. So I, um, I, I think, you know, I, I, I agree that, what, what, I don't believe we need the units as well to, to meet our. Requirement tonight. And, um, so I, I'm, I'm in favor of not including it on the list.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Balch?
Yeah, and, you know, respectfully, I might be in the minority here and I understand that. But I, I do, uh, see the math on these larger sites that make up to the numbers we need. And if any of those particularly fall off, uh, the east side, I, I believe could be a partial solution. That's what I'm saying. I don't know if it's an actual solution. So I'm not trying to advocate, uh, the east side into the final element. What I'm saying is, when I'm being asked as a council member in my role and duties, uh, to densify the remaining significant portion of our community throughout it. Versus studying it for a potential re, ability to reduce the densities in other communities such as South Sunol Boulevard or. Black Avenue or frankly, Old Santa Rita, uh, that's what I do, uh. I, I would like the information on, and that's what my, my, uh. My request is, I might, I might be on the end. I will mention that the, we, we allow people to vote on, on many of our lakes, you know, Orwell. Orwell and, uh, 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 Del Val, I mean, you know, so, so the truck exhaust. Because El Charro is, as my understanding is, an already identified regional transportation road and in our general plan. So, uh, we're not really changing, that being said, the alignment of El Charro, a hundred million or not. Uh, that's, that's my point. I, I, I'd like us to, at least in the EIR, be looking at the traffic both ways. And what it means for our community, but I might be in the minority. That's okay. Thank you.
Some of that was studied already. Okay, sounds good. Uh, no hands up. So take a vote, please. On removing Site 28A and 28B. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Narum?
Yeah, no, I'm just going to say, I would like to see it left in. I, I want to be clear, I'm not ready to sign up. To rezone the whole thing, but I think it's really important to understand how it fits into the picture. To keep all of the options available to us because we don't know what may fall out here. Uh, through the EIR process, through a property owner getting a better offer and saying, don't rezone me. Um, HCD, I mean, I think that's a wild card, what they may take off. Um, and we just, I think it's important to have the options. I think it's important to understand them. Uh, but again, I'm, I'm absolutely not ready to rezone it. Um, just, I, I. Suggest that we try to keep things open and I, I think that, you know, we have to ask ourselves, we've talked around it a bit, but. Um, we're eliminating a lot of industrial, commercial, industrial sites, offices potentially, some retail. And are, are we just going to turn? The town into, into housing? I mean, I don't think that's what any of us really want, and I think it's important. Um, to think about that a little bit and are we going to try to continue to try to have a balance between. Yeah, having the housing, the commercial, the retail and the industrial in our community. I mean, that's one of the reasons why our, uh, financial base is so, so strong because we're well-balanced and. Uh, through the bad times, some, some sections of the, of the, those things, um. Generate the revenue when offset losses in others. So, um, that's where I am. It appears I'm going to be in the minority too, but at least thank you for listening.
Thank you, but I thought, I made the point too. This is industrial zoning. This is what you guys want. This could be. That site for those industrial uses you were thinking of.
Housing there. There's.
Past the Pleasanton, uh, transfer station.
No, there's, it backs up to, um. The Ironwood fifty-five and over community. I believe they're zoning the county for three hundred.
The map shows it as a gap there, but yeah. You're right, it's in that proximity area, though, absolutely, but it's zoned industrial. All right, uh, could we take a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Hi.
Councilmember Testa?
Hi.
Councilmember Balch?
No.
Councilmember Narum?
No.
Mayor Brown?
Absolutely, I.
Motion passes three, two.
Okay, round. Okay, we're on to our last site, and hopefully our numbers will add up, and, uh, we don't have to, uh, trade sites, so, for upzoning.
I'm mute. Um, last but not least, like Site twenty-nine, uh, the Oracle property. This is a site just adjacent to the existing, uh, bar, parking lot. It's a three-acre portion of the Oracle site that's currently vacant, um, recommended for, uh, high-density housing. It's forty-five to seventy-five to the acre, yielding a hundred and thirty-five units at the low end. Uh, and the planning commission's recommendation was to include this site.
Right, looks good. Um, any, anybody want to comment or make a motion? It's right next to Bart, and easy access to the freeway.
I'll move that we included in the EIR at the recommended density.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, motion made by Narum, seconded by Arkin. Uh, seeing no hands up, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Narum?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Balch?
Aye.
Councilmember Testa?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes, absolutely.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, before we, uh, adjourn the meeting, can we have a quick count? It looks like Jennifer's busy tabulating right now.
Our Vanna, our Vanna White, so, doing a, like, the results of the various changes.
Five thousand four units, hundred fifty-nine percent.
Fifty-nine, sixty-five, plus fifty percent overage, I'll bet.
So, with the changes in density, let me just. Checking against the staff report. My numbers come up with, um, our site inventory having a total of five thousand and thirty units, which would be three hundred and fifteen units above our fifty percent buffer, and one thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven minutes above our general surplus shortfall.
I, I was following along as well, Jennifer, and I got, I got a similar, um, a similar result with those changes, so I'll, we've, we've double-checked. So, yes, that gives us a slight surplus over the buffer, um, and enough sort of overflow capacity in the lower-income units to accommodate the above moderate, um, as well. So, uh, that would meet the, um, fifty percent threshold criteria, and would be, um, suitable to carry forward into the environmental review.
Excellent, all right. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work, and here we are. Geez, at eleven-thirty-something. And, uh, any, any last, oh, I'm gonna give it back to our city manager, any comments here before we wrap up?
Um, no, thank you very much for working so hard. Uh, I was very skeptical after the first couple that we'd get through, but, really nice job picking up the base.
Thank you, thank you, Ellen, for your great work, for Shweta, and especially Jennifer, who we're not going to be seeing much anymore, but, you, your last meeting got to be a mega meeting, so, all right, thank you, council. Thanks for working through all of the challenges. We, uh, we came to some tough decisions, that's for sure, and, uh, we're able to end up in a good spot, so. All right, with that, meeting's adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.